Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I will call to order this business meeting, this regular business meeting of the Bloomington City Council, Monday, April 3rd, 2023. Thanks for everybody who's joining us here in the chambers, and thanks to everybody watching at home. We will start the meeting as we typically do. If you could, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Once again, welcome. Hope everybody survived the little spring snowstorm over the weekend. Our first order of business this evening is the approval of our agenda, and on the agenda this evening, we have two, in the introductory items, we have two proclamations, one for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week and the second for Public Health Week. We're going to have an introduction of new employees, and then we'll make an appointment to our Advisory Board of Health. The consent business, which Councilmember Nelson will take us through, has 16 items on it. Under Item 4, Hearings, Resolutions, and Ordinances, we have two public hearings. One is on the 700 American Boulevard West Pre-Development Agreement, and other, the next is on Item 4.2, a public hearing on a prohibited nuisance conduct ordinance. Under our organizational business, we have five items. We'll have a report from our city assessor, Tim Boltruch, who talked about our 2023 assessment report. We'll have a budget discussion and update with Kari Carlson, our Deputy Finance Officer. We'll have a discussion about tree assessment ordinance and payment plan discussion, and then get an update on our 98th Street study that is undergoing, that is underway now. And then we'll finish, as we typically do, with our City Council policy and issue update. Counselor, are there any changes or additions to the agenda this evening? If not, I will move approval of our agenda tonight.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six-zero. And I should note, Councilmember Carter is not with us this evening. On our agenda, now that we have it, Item 2.1 and 2.2 are proclamations, so I'm going to head down to the microphone here. As I said, we've got two proclamations tonight, and actually, they're a little bit out of order. One is a proclamation for something occurring this week, and the second is for a proclamation occurring next week, but the next week proclamation is first on the agenda, so we'll stick with the agenda order right now. And Item 2.1 is a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And we've got two of our telecommunicators, our public safety dispatch folks here this evening, Lizzie Eastwood and Josh Rukert. Good evening and welcome. If you'd like, you can come up, because then we can do the grip and grin, and after I read the proclamation, we could do all that, so if you can just get right in behind me, it'd be perfect. This is a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 9th through the 15th, 2023. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require emergency services. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of first responders is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the City of Bloomington Emergency Communication Center. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities, providing information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators of the City of Bloomington have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and care of patients. And whereas, in 2022, the City of Bloomington Police Department staffed nine telecommunicators who worked as a team to handle 161,601 phone calls and who entered 66,698 computer-aided dispatch events. And whereas, each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, I, Tim Bussi, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim the week of April 9th through the 15th, 2023, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the City of Bloomington, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe, dated this third day of April, 2023. We've all worked quite a bit and seen the work quite a bit of our public safety professionals here in City Hall. They do outstanding work, our police officers, our firefighters. I think one of the toughest jobs that I have seen are the jobs that these folks do. The demands on them, the stress that is placed on, the hours that they put in, the work that they do 24/7 is just exemplary, and as the proclamation said, it really is the key to what we do. From the first contact from citizens to the information relayed to our public safety personnel, these folks are invaluable. And I'm so glad we had the opportunity to issue a proclamation and we could recognize the work that you do. Thank you so very much. Lizzie and, I'm missing my notes here, Josh, excuse me, Lizzie and Josh, thank you so very much. It is greatly appreciated. I really want to thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Yeah.
We're going to do a quick picture here.
Thank you.
Would anybody like to say anything?
Absolutely.
Very good.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Take that with you.
Thank you.
And our second proclamation this evening is actually for a week happening this week. We're in the midst of it right now. It is a proclamation for National Public Health Week, April 3rd through the 9th, 2023. Whereas, the week of April 3rd through the 9th, 2023 is National Public Health Week, with a theme centering and celebrating cultures and health. And whereas, the goal of National Public Health Week in 2023 is to recognize the contributions of public health in improving the health of the people of the United States and achieving health equity. And whereas, Black, Indigenous, and people of color populations in the United States continue to experience disparities in the burden of illness and death as compared with the entire population. And whereas, one of the city's three objectives in the Bloomington Tomorrow Together Strategic Plan is to achieve significant improvement in the indices measuring the community's environmental and individual health. And whereas, public health professionals collaborate with partners outside of the public health sector, including city staff, first responders, staff from Bloomington Public Schools, and the business community, recognizing that other sectors can influence health outcomes. And whereas, efforts to adequately support public health in Minnesota will result in a statewide public health system that prevents disease, protects well-being, and improves the health of all residents regardless of where they live. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussi, do hereby proclaim the week of April 3rd through the 9th, 2023, as National Public Health Week in Bloomington, and call upon the people of this community to continue focusing on inclusion and equity to ensure decisions are made with everyone's health in mind, so that we can build a healthier Bloomington, dated this third day of April, 2023. Now, we've got Dr. Nick Kelly, we've got the Chair of our Board of Health, Star Sage, they're both with us this evening. If you could please come up. And I was a name short, come on up.
We're going to be introduced after this.
Ah, very good. Councilmember Carter has talked in her time on the council, she's talked frequently how long you live depends on your zip code in the City of Bloomington. And when we read about and talk about disparities in health and disparities in health outcomes in the City of Bloomington, we see it right there. And the work that the Department of Public Health does every day and has for years, but certainly after the last three years, is greatly appreciated and is often, I think, overlooked by a community that works toward health and looks at health but doesn't realize all the work that goes into it behind the scenes with our folks in the Department of Public Health. So I want to congratulate and thank you all, congratulate you on this proclamation for National Public Health Week, and say thank you for the work that you do. I apologize for not calling you up while I was reading, because I kind of figured you were going to talk. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're going to do a quick picture, and then I'll hand the microphone over to you. Come on in.
Thank you.
Very good. Say anything? Oh, no. I'm here to take that with you. Very good. Thank you. Congratulations. Next up on our agenda is our introduction of new employees, and we have three new employees on my list this evening. Folks from public health, from Bloomington Community Access Television, and internal folks with our mail coordinator, and I see Diane coming forward to do some introductions for us. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, and Mayor and City Council. I'm very pleased to introduce you to three new employees in the Community Services Department. We will start first with our mail coordinator, Nolan Posevio. Nolan joined the city on February 22nd. Nolan worked in shipping and receiving jobs from 2003 until 2017, and then from 2017 until this February, he worked at the VA Medical Center in Minneapolis. He performed housekeeping tasks, drove equipment, handled boxes and supplies, and created just generally a positive work environment for coworkers, patients, and visitors alike. You will be hard-pressed to find Nolan not smiling, right? His friendly and upbeat attitude just creates a positive atmosphere for everyone around him. Please welcome Nolan Posevio. Nolan, did you want to say a few words?
No, thanks.
All right.
Well, I will say, good evening, Nolan, welcome. Thank you for being here this evening, and thank you for being part of the Bloomington team. Glad to see you here. Thanks much.
Good to be here, thank you.
All right, and next, I wanted to introduce to you Patrick Wilson. Patrick began with the Communications Division in January of 2023, taking on the role of Bloomington Community Access Television Production Specialist. Patrick started his journey into television and media production during his junior year at Park Senior High School in Cottage Grove back in 1988. At that time, he took some of the first high school classes on television production in the state. After high school, Patrick attended Henning Technical College, earning a diploma in television production. Patrick got his feet wet working at WDIO W-I-R-T Television in Duluth. He then moved back to the Twin Cities where he worked for Burnsville Egan Community Television for 12 years. Please welcome Patrick Wilson. Did you want to say anything? All right.
Wow, shy group. Well, welcome, Patrick. Glad to have you onboard. Welcome.
All right, and then finally, you've seen her, now you'll be formally introduced to her, Irene Babacani. Irene joined the Public Health Division as our new Assistant Public Health Administrator on February 6th. Irene has a background in public health and a passion to serve the community that she lives in. Most recently, Irene worked at the Centers for Disease Control Foundation, specifically in COVID-19 workforce and vaccine efforts. Throughout her career, she has served in various leadership roles in public health-focused nonprofit organizations. Irene was born and raised in London and moved to the U.S. in 2003, and recently, she transferred to Minnesota from California. Irene tells us she's been enjoying the beautiful nature and the city's cultural gems, and she is excited to discover more. Please welcome Irene Babacani.
Oh, I shouldn't have talked to myself.
Would you like to say anything?
Well, I'll break, oop, I'll break the trend and say thank you, Mayor Bussi and Councilmembers. Thank you, Diane, and in the two months I've been here, I've been really inspired by the work that the Public Health Division is doing. It's incredible, and I've really been very lucky to have a leader like Nick, who's been guiding me throughout the way, so thank you, and I'm happy to be here.
Well, welcome. Thanks much for being here, Irene, Patrick, and Nolan. Great to have you onboard. It really is looking forward to, now that we know your names, we'll be sure to stop by and say hello, and say hello to you in the halls or wherever we might see you. So thanks very much for being here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up on our agenda, the final piece under our introductory items, is an Advisory Board of Health appointment. We have an opening in the Advisory Board of Health. As you know, we made those recommendations and the appointments back in March, and already we've got somebody who has a conflict and is not able to fulfill their role on the Advisory Board of Health. And so we are, we need to fill that vacancy. Now, we had, back in March, we did have four openings and we had five applicants. And we reached out to the applicant who was not selected and asked if that person would be interested, and that person was interested, so that person did apply. And as I go through here, Annabelle Cornblum was the candidate who was not applied, who was not appointed, but again, had applied and was amenable to being part, to be in the appointment. And so, Counsel, if, based on the fact that she, Annabelle was the, basically in the hole, she was on deck with the four folks that we appointed in March and is now is willing to serve, I would move that we appoint Annabelle Cornblum to the Advisory Board of Health for a, I believe it's a three-year term, but I can't say that for certain.
Second.
For a one-year term, excuse me. One-year term, my apologies.
Then I'll second that one-year term.
One-year term, all right. So to clarify, to appoint Annabelle Cornblum to a one-year term on the Advisory Board of Health, and a motion and a second by Councilmember Lowman. Any other discussion, Counsel? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six-zero. Congratulations to Annabelle, and welcome to the Advisory Board of Health. Moving on to our consent agenda this evening, Councilmember Nelson has her consent agenda. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. If I might, just quickly on one of your proclamations, do you mind if I make a quick statement on that? The public health one?
Please, go ahead.
So I had the opportunity last week as acting mayor to present to the legislature our bonding request, and was very privileged and honored to do that, to help public health. So I just want to emphasize thank you to our entire team there. We know the situation, and we are working diligently to help out there for the good work that you all do. So just wanted to bring that up, so thank you for the indulgence.
Absolutely.
With regards to 3.1, I will hold, or three, all of the threes, I will hold 3.1. I believe that 3.16 is going to be held by the mayor, and I didn't hear of any other holds. Okay, with that, I will move to approve 3.2 through 3.15.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nelson, second by Councilmember Lowman, to approve the consent agenda, 3.2 to 3.15, as stated. Any further council discussion on this? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six-zero. Councilmember, maybe we should start with 3.16 and then double back to the resolution with the donations?
Yeah, sounds good.
So to let, I held 3.16, this is the Polar Semiconductor Job Creation Fund Application Support Resolution. We talked about this, I think the council talked about this a couple of meetings back. I wanted to pull it, just to let you know that I'm going to recuse myself from this vote because of my association with a competitor of polar semiconductors. But what I'm going to do, unless there is council discussion on this, I'm not going to step away. I'm just going to hang out here and we'll call the vote and we'll move on. Unless the council is going to get into some discussion on this, if that's the case, I'll head to the back room. So if everybody's clear on that, that's where we're standing.
The only question I have, Mayor, is do you want me to call the vote then?
That'd be fine.
Continue to be acting mayor?
Sure.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. So is there any discussion on the item? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I think, Mayor, I'd like to move to adopt a resolution regarding the support of a Job Creation Fund Application in connection with polar semiconductor LLC.
Second.
Hearing a motion from Councilmember Lowman, and a second from Councilmember DeLisandro. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, 3.16 passes. I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. And then we'll go back to you with Item 3.1, the resolution to accept donations.
It reminds me of my week as acting mayor. The power went to my head. So again, one of the true joys of having the consent agenda is when you get the donations, and so I would like to thank people for their generous donations to our police department. We had people donate food, t-shirts, and someone make a donation to the K-9. There's one item I'd just like to, just for clarification, put out there that there's a donation for a significant amount, about a little over 49,000, from the Metropolitan Airports Commission for us to get some kind of cool robot that we will use to help with safety at the airport, obviously a big issue for travelers within the region, and our good partnership with them allows that type of thing to happen. We also had a dozen people donate to the needle workers, to the woodshop quilters, and not to be mistaken for the quilters, but also the library quilters, which I assume is similar, but at a library. And it was things like yarn, fabric, batting, books, magazines, knitting needles, and all of those types of things that people need, including something I was completely unfamiliar with and continue to be unfamiliar with called fat quarters. I don't know what those things are, but that's because I'm not generally very good with hobbies, so someone can explain that to me later. But with that, I just want to, again, thank people in the community for their generosity with these donations to the police, to our various programs within the community that people really rely on to connect and build the community around here. So I would, with that, move Item 3.1.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nelson, second by Councilmember DeLisandro, to accept Item 3.1 and adopt the resolution to accept the donations as listed. Any further council discussion on this? Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Nelson, I think that the books went to the library and the fabric went to the quilters, and I think they're two separate things. I don't think, there's a subsection of quilters called the library quilters. That's how I read it anyway, but either way, hopefully, hopefully they're having fun reading about quilting, maybe? That's what's happening? All said.
Clarification accepted. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries six-zero. Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. We'll move on to Item 4 on our agenda, our public hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. We have two public hearings this evening. Our first is a public hearing on 700 American Boulevard West, the pre-development agreement that the city has. We'll be hearing tonight from Mike Palermo, from our Port Authority, who has all the details on this, and I know that because we talked about it at the Port Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm here today to talk about 700 American Boulevard West. This is a pre-development agreement. So to give you a little context of where 700 American is, by the REI, that kind of pad site, you'd think you would miss it, you'd drive right by, but there is a two-acre site located right there, Zone B2 currently. We have top-line credit union being constructed currently to the west there, and goodwill to the east and Toro Kitty Corner. And to give you a little background on why the city owns this site, so way back, almost 20 years ago now, we had Right-Away for American Boulevard project, and we acquired nine parcels. And after we did that project, we ended up with two parcels remaining that we then sold. We sold that to Fraunchu Company to do a credit union, which ultimately was top-line credit union being constructed now, and they were going to do a medical office building on 700 American, the site we're here to talk about. It kind of went through a couple of variations, project kept getting smaller and smaller, and eventually Fraunchu realized that it wasn't going to work. So the city exercised its ability to repurchase the property, which we did in 2012. We held it for a little while, and then we put another request for proposal out for a developer to develop the site, and in 2017, we entered into agreement with Hy-Vee. They were looking to do kind of a smaller format grocery store, about 14,000 square feet, a health market, a newer concept for them, and as they kind of got into it, negotiations had eventually stalled as well. So the city continued to remain owner, and the property still is vacant. So after that kind of failed attempt to develop, we did some market studies. We worked with Ellers to do some kind of, both market studies and concept designs, to see what would be a good fit for the site. The Lindell Avenue retrofit kind of reaffirmed what we thought for the site, that it would actually kind of work as a mixed-use site. And as counsel knows, this is a gateway to the city. Lindell Avenue is a high corridor, traffic corridor that people enter into the city, so we wanted to highlight this as a feature as you enter the city. We put a RFP out on September 7th, it closed on November 1st. We didn't put a whole lot of detail in what we wanted. We said we would prefer mixed use, but we kind of kept it open. But we did really hit home that we want this to be a gateway feature, that this is something that we want people to see and kind of think of Bloomington as they enter. And then obviously work with adjacent sites if possible. So that RFP closed on November 1st, and as most of you would remember, on December 5th, we held a closed session to review two proposals that were submitted. Council at that time directed us to enter negotiations with Schaefer Richardson. Then they moved quickly because the property is in a qualified census tract for 2022, but not 2023, but we passed a resolution to kind of lock that qualified census tract in, which is important when applying for low-income housing tax credits, which this proposal is expecting that they will apply for. So on December 19th, you all passed a resolution in support to kind of lock that in. And then, as we move forward in the project, March 21st, the Port Authority held their meeting and adopted a resolution of support for this pre-development agreement that was in your packet, and that brings us to today, where we're here to have your support, hopefully, for the pre-development agreement. So the parties of the pre-development agreement will be the City of Bloomington as the site owner, and the Port Authority will act as project manager, knowing that this will likely have some financial ask and some negotiations that happen that Port Authority will start taking on. This project originally started with the HRA, but as the HRA transitions to smaller-sized development, the Port Authority taking these larger housing developments on, it was a natural transition to have the Port Authority take this on and manage it. And then the developer, Schaefer Richardson, a little about them, they bring 27 years of experience in commercial, residential, and mixed-use development. They're a little bit newer to the affordable housing side, but they've got three open complete buildings that they've been managing, which adds to their portfolio of 3,000 multifamily units that they have. And then they're working with Urban Works as their architect, which has over 17,000 units that they've constructed and have won multiple awards. So the pre-development agreement, it's, for the most part, there's some boilerplate stuff in there, but it does outline kind of the goals for the project, and some key milestones or expectations of the project as we start moving into other phases. So for one, we say up to 153 units with 5,000 square feet of commercial space, and we expect this will likely change. You'll see those changes as this will require a rezoning and go through the normal entitlement process. There are some constraints with parking and some access, and they're working with our planning staff and engineering and fire department on how to best handle that, and potentially working with the site next door to see if there's any way to kind of address some of those, some of those needs. So that'll come to you at, hopefully, midsummer here. I have a timeline on the next slide. Like I said, likely some financial askers likely apply for TIF, Tax Increment Financing. They will be applying for tax credits. This may take several rounds, there is a cycle to tax credits. They start right about now, and the application is due in July, and then there's kind of what they call like the cleanup round later in the year for when projects that maybe were aborted but aren't able to move forward at this time, that money flows to other projects. So this might take several rounds, it's not unusual for that to happen. And then apply for other grant sources to help fill those funding gaps. And the pre-development agreement also outlines that we would like to see a neighborhood meeting sometime before the entitlement process is complete to get the neighborhood feedback and kind of help influence that final decision. and kind of help influence the final design a little bit. So project timeline, now until fall, like I said, they'll be going through their entitlement process, the rezoning. Currently, there's a parking study underway to just identify what the actual parking needs are and other things that go along with that. And we anticipate, you know, midsummer, by fall, they'll have that neighborhood meeting because the entitlement process will hopefully be wrapping up towards fall time. At that time, when we have more of a final idea of what that design will look like, we can then start doing the financial feasibility and the analysis of what gap there might be in their project and what grants they'll apply for and tax credits that they'll be applying for. We hope by the end of this year, we'll have a term sheet, and then that kind of leads to a formal development agreement. So this is kind of that first step because we don't have some of those details that a development agreement has, but we want to acknowledge that we are partnering with Schaefer. And so by January 2025, we hope to sell the property to Schaefer Richardson. That seems like a long way out, but like I explained, those tax credits come in rounds. So a lot of times, you know, if they're applying this round and they're not awarded, they can apply in multiple rounds, but there's only two rounds per year. So this gives them kind of three full attempts to really go through that process. And if by the third time by late 2024, they haven't been awarded, then we know that they're probably not going to get the low-income housing tax credits, and we'll look at Plan B. But that's why it's kind of that long timeframe. Most of the work will probably, on our end, will be done more this year, but it will be dependent on that, the award on low-income housing tax credits. So with that, I can answer questions, or there is a recommended motion?
Thank you, Mr. Palermo, appreciate it. Council questions here? And just to let you know, I appreciate the answer about the timeframe because that was the first question that I asked the Port Authority, was that seems like a long time to wait, to be all the way in 2025 before we get to the sale of the property. But as Mr. Palermo explained, it's just to fit into the cycle of potential tax credits to try and give them the best opportunity to make sure that they can receive those in this project. Any questions? Councilmember Delisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nice to see you, Mr. Palermo. So is part of the pre-development agreement, we're not making any specific conditions to the property, is that right? Beyond the fact that, you know, they hope, we all hope it goes smoothly to get all of this financing organized?
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Delisandro. There's no specific conditions on the actual development of the site, on kind of what the project will look like. It's more kind of details, there's a right-of-entry agreement, so they can do kind of their prep work, the neighborhood meetings in there. So just some project expectations, but not into the details of the actual design of the building. That's, that will happen with, on the planning department, and go to Planning Commission and then City Council. So you'll see, have that opportunity to see that development as they submit their formal application for entitlements.
Right. Great, thank you.
Council others? Seeing no questions, this is a public hearing. And I will open the public hearing on item 4.1, Public Hearing Regarding the 700 American Boulevard West Pre-Development Agreement. Is there anyone in the council chambers who wishes to speak to item 4.1 this evening? Mr. Sable, is there anyone on the phone?
Mr. Mayor and council members, no one on the phone.
Last call for anybody in the chambers? Counsel, no one coming forward in the chambers, no one on the phone wishing to speak to item 4.1. I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Martin to close the public hearing on item 4.1. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 6-0, closing the public hearing. Counsel, any questions on this? I do believe it got through the Port Authority with a unanimous vote. We did have some good discussion, asked some of those questions that I think were answered in this presentation. And I think it's, it's a, it's going to be a good project to fill a parcel of land that has sat vacant for too long, I believe. Anything else, counsel? If not, I look for action on this.
Mayor, I'm happy to.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move that we adopt the resolution approving preliminary redevelopment agreement with the Port Authority and SRBP Strategic Housing LLC.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Delisandro, to adopt the resolution approving a preliminary redevelopment agreement with the Port Authority and SRBP Strategic Housing. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 6-0. Thank you very much, Mr. Palermo, appreciate it. We'll move on to our second public hearing of the night. This is item 4.2, a public hearing regarding prohibited nuisance conduct ordinance. Ms. Manderscheid?
Thank you, Mayor members. I was asked to put this ordinance together in consultation with staff. We, lawyers are sometimes accused of dancing on the top of a pin, and some might think this is true. In this instance, we became aware of a little bit of a difference in language when we were analyzing the trespass ordinance, or excuse me, the trespass statute in state law. And so we decided to take the opportunity to conform our specific city code language to the language in state law. So you'll see in your packet, instead of doing like a parsed-out, strike-through, I just struck out the whole sentence, you could more easily understand the edit that was happening there. So this will now conform our law in our city code to match that in state law. I would characterize it as a conformity ordinance.
It seems to be a conformity, a kind of cleanup, just to make sure that we are in accordance with state law. Counsel, any questions on this? All right, hearing none. This is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing on item 4.2. This is regarding the prohibited nuisance conduct ordinance. Is there anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item 4.2? Mr. Sable, do we have anyone on the phone?
Mayor and council members, no one on the phone.
Last call for anyone in the council chambers? Seeing no one coming forward, counsel, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.2.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Nelson to close the public hearing on item 4.2. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 6-0. Counsel, any comment or questions on this? Otherwise, I would look for action. Councilmember Delisandro.
A quick clarification, and then I'll happily move the comment. Is there a, is this, does this need to also, I know we give trespass notices via police action, does this need to be updated there too? Or did we, was it all raised fine and we just needed to update our code?
Mayor members, this, we will certainly analyze those. There's a process by which we need to go through with the police department once we have made a change to our city code that relates to the criminal code. So we have a process in place that we always go through whenever that's the case. So we'll analyze everything. We also will meet with the police department. Typically, we'll do a roll call notice, or we'll talk to the chief and the deputy chiefs about this, just to make sure everybody's on the same page procedurally and that they're using the updated language.
Yeah, great, okay, thank you for that. I happened to be on a ride-along, and there was, there was some ambiguity here, so it's great that we're cleaning that up. I think everybody, including anybody who might be handed a notice, will appreciate the clarification. And with that, Mr. Mayor, if you're ready, I'll go ahead and make a move here. Okay, great. I move to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 12 of the city code related to public peace and safety.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Delisandro, second by Councilmember Martin to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 12 of the code related to public peace and safety. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 6-0. Thank you very much, Ms. Manderscheid. We will move to item five on our agenda, our organizational business. And item 5.1 is a report on our 2023 assessment, and assessments were just completed, and I think everybody should have gotten one in the mail, I'm sure you probably did. And we have our new, well, not new, but first-time new making this report to us, Tim Bulger, our city assessor, is going to update us on what we learned through the assessment process this year. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Could I ask you to get right into a microphone?
Oh, yeah.
Either move the microphone to you or to the microphone?
Let's do that. How's that sound?
That's better, perfect.
All right, as mentioned, I'm Tim Bulger, the city assessor, and I'm here to report on the 2023 assessment and assessment report. So we publish this report every March-ish. It went live last week on the 28th on our website. There's a lot of good data in here, and a lot of it is tailored to internal and external users that put it in other reports or things of that nature. So it may not be the most thrilling information for the council and our residents tonight, so I'm just going to talk some high-level statistics that would be of interest to everyone here. And I'm also going to spend some time talking about what goes into the assessment rather than what came out of it here. So I think that'd be a good use of my time this evening. Let's figure out the clicker. All right, so here's the outline for tonight. Basically, I want to talk about what does the assessor do or what goes into our assessment. And then I want to talk about the assessment timeline. It's very lengthy and confusing for some, and there's a few items under that I'll discuss in more detail. And then finally, I'll get to the market, update what we saw in the 2023 assessment, what changed from 22. And then I'm going to talk about property tax in general and some programs available for refund or deferral. So what does the assessor do? Our duty is very statute-driven. We're tied to that on many things. So the primary objective is to value and classify property as of January 2nd each year. And that date's very important, and you'll hear me say it many times through this presentation. In general, there's three approaches to value, and this is speaking in appraisal terms. There's the cost, the income, and the market approach. The cost is valuing the land and then valuing the structure separately based on the cost to replace the structure and applying depreciation to that. The income is what it sounds like. You look at the net operating income of property, and then you apply capitalization rate to determine the value. And then the market approach is looking at similar sales of the subject property and then making adjustments to that sale price to determine what the value is. Now, in assessing terms, we do what's called mass appraisal. We don't have the time or resources to take these approaches on each individual property, so we would do it en masse. And we use something called a market-indicated cost approach, which is a blend of the cost approach and the market approach. So we take our basic cost tables, and that's our starting point, and then we look at the market influences over the course of the year and make adjustments to those tables. And that's where we get our values from. So what goes into the assessment are these three main cyclical tasks we perform. The quintile, which is what it sounds like. We review in thorough detail 20% of the properties in Bloomington each year. That amounts to about 6,200 parcels reviewed. We're looking at land, size and characteristics, exterior, interner characteristics of buildings, looking at permits and any changes that may have occurred since the last time we reviewed the property. And that takes up most of our summer, as you imagine, with 6,200 parcels to look at. We're probably spending May through September on this process. Then we have permits, and I put 1,800 here because that's about what we look at, and we only look at value-adding permits. We get about 5,000, and a lot of these are closed out on the front end for our purposes, like if you replace a water heater or you replace a gas oven and you need a permit for that, we know that's not going to impact your assessed value. So we don't bother looking at those types of permits. What we're looking for is remodeling permits, basement finish, new construction, things of that nature. And so we do that process October through December of each year. The purpose of doing it at the end of the year is we have to value what was there as of January 2nd. So if the permit is 50% complete, we need to add that amount of value for it and so on. So we do that at the end of the year. And then the sale review occurs throughout the year. And for the 23 assessment, this is sales that occurred October 1st of '21 through September 30th of 2022. So those 12 months of sales are really what goes into the values that we submit. So there's about 1,500 per year we look at, and we're reviewing those essentially to determine, are they arms-length transactions? Were there any adjustments that need to be made? And can we use these for our modeling? And so those are the three cyclical tasks we perform. And then we manage appeals at all levels. Once those values go out, we field phone calls, we do local board appeals, we do tax court appeals. So that's a big piece of the process as well. And then finally, what we do is provide data to internal and external customers, like the assessment report, like this presentation. We speak to realtors, brokers, appraisers, assessors from other jurisdictions, provide data, answer questions. So this is a bit convoluted, and I'm not going to try to use the laser pointer here, but this is the assessor's timeline. And that middle orange box indicates January 2023, that's our assessment date. So you'll note the 12 months of sales that went into that. That's the orange box to the left, October 21 through September of '22. And then you'll notice the orange box on the far right, and that's, property tax statement comes out in March of '24 for the value we set here in January of '23. Then you finally pay those taxes in May and October of '14. So at the end of the timeline here, October 21 to when you finally pay your taxes is October 24. It's a three-year process. And there's a lot of stuff in the middle there that I'll go in more detail, but some of the key things are that quintile I mentioned, that's May through September of '22. The permits, October, November, December of '22. Then we set the assessment, then appeals are really March, April, May, and June of '23. And then there's some other dates on here that I'll go through in more detail on another slide. So time trends, I was going to spend some additional time on this one, but for brevity, I'm going to keep this short. I think what people should know for time trends is essentially, when we set our assessment, we need to use the sales and compare them to the value of January 2nd, 2023. So if your sale happened at the beginning of the sale study period, October of 2021, if that house were to have sold on January 2nd of 2023, you would imagine that would be a different price in the 15 months that occurred between then. So the Department of Revenue determines what that percent should be, and then we apply that percentage to the sale prices. So they initially determined 7.55% appreciation was the correct number, and we determined that was not the correct number. And so we appealed that time trend through Hennepin County on a larger-scale appeal, and the result was 2.55%. And now, why this matters is essentially, we had to bring properties up less than we would have if we'd stuck with the initial time trend. That was saying, you know, if your sale happened 12 months ago, it needs to go up seven and a half percent instead of two and a half percent. So that saved our residential values from increasing at a higher rate than they should have. And the basis for this appeal really was the changing interest rates that happened over the last 12 months. And I have that chart available later on the presentation. So I'm going to skip the example on the right side, but that's the gist of it. That home with the original prescribed time trend would have been 345, 800. Instead, it's 327, 300 was the resulting value. So valuation, hold on a second. So what goes into our valuation, there's some fairly strict rules and regulations we follow. Statistical measurements that are important is that our median ratio needs to fall between 90 and 105% of each of the segments we're graded on. And this means the 2023 assessed value divided by the time-trended sale price. The segments we're graded on are apartment, industrial, commercial, residential, on-water, residential, off-water, and then aggregate residential. And so they give us those segments that they're looking for, 90 to 105%. We always target 95%. And then we stratify these much, much further than what's prescribed by the Department of Revenue. So if you look to the right, these are the residential stratifications, or some of the ones that we look at, and we're targeting 95% on the majority of these where it makes sense to target that. Again, if you don't have enough sales to infer a statistical relevance of that stratification, we don't go with it. But typically, district or neighborhood code will want to make sure those make sense, quality of home makes sense, style of home, and so forth. So we have these median ratios we need to meet. Then we're also graded on measures of uniformity and vertical equity, which essentially is saying, are your low-value homes over-assessed versus your high-value homes, or vice versa? They want to make sure that the assessment's not regressive or progressive. So we're graded on that. We get everything lined up to where we think it should be. We do dozens and dozens of iterations of these values internally and have other people review them. Then we send it off to Hennepin County. They do the same checks in their own way. And then it goes to the Department of Revenue where those checks are performed again at a higher level. So needless to say, this takes a lot of time and effort, and we're pretty confident in the results of the assessment because of these checks in place. So appeals, as I mentioned, value notices go out in March. March 8th was the date this year. Then we field calls and formally address appeals. This is a great opportunity for our office to build trust with the public, explain our process. How did we come up with that value? What's selling in your neighborhood? What's the timeline? How do property taxes work? You name it, we answer it. To date, we have fielded 340 calls. 207 of them were value-related, the other were general questions about property taxes, homestead, et cetera. So we take this opportunity and try to spend time with our customers, explain the process, make sure they leave the conversation feeling more informed than they started it. They may not agree with what they heard, but this opportunity exists to kind of educate, and then also we can address the values. As I mentioned, it's a mass appraisal process. The models don't fit every single property. We do make Uh, we do make adjustments to value during this time. And some of that i- is because we haven't been in the house for a long time or something specific doesn't match our models, but. We do go through this process and we do change values and I think it's important to have that check in place. Uh, so after those informal discussions, if we don't come to an agreement, you can attend the Local Board of Appeal and Equalization. That's on April nineteenth here in the council chambers. Uh, we ask that you talk to us ahead of time so we know you're coming and we can chat through things and, um. Let you know what your presentation should look like if that's route you wanna go. If you attend that local board and you still don't like what you heard, you can appeal at the county level. And that'll be June twelfth this year at Hennepin County Government Center. Uh, and that's the final route of this more informal version of appeal. And then you can always attend tax court. Uh, there's a filing fee involved in that. You don't need to attend any of these board meetings to go there. Uh, you have up until April thirtieth of the year, the taxes are due to file for that. So that would be twenty-twenty-three assessment would be April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. So I'm gonna dive into the statistics now. I I felt it was important to kinda get that upfront and and really have people understand what we do and what goes into this. And it's not just hitting a button, bump everything five percent, so. Um, off to the left, you'll see our property type aggregations. And then you'll see the parcel count next to it and then the red boxes, twenty-two values and percent change, twenty-three value percent change. And then the percent change between years. And so that's what I'll focus on here is residential. You'll note one point nine percent year-over-year. Uh, that's a big departure from last year that was sitting around sixteen percent. And, uh, we'll go into interest rates and volume after this, but that's a big piece of why things didn't go down and they're still kind of afloat. If you if you jump down to condominiums and townhomes, uh, you'll notice those went up four point nine and four point one respectively. And that kinda signals, hey, we have a little bit of affordability issue here. The stuff at the low end and the cheap end is the stuff that's getting multiple offers still and and increasing at a higher rate. Um, as far as commercial goes, that that went up three point five percent and that's a mixed bag of properties. Some did well, some did not do well. Um, industrially, you'll note twenty point seven percent and it's still a hot market. It has not been impacted by, uh, interest rates. And it's it's strictly e-commerce is growing. People expect same-day, next-day delivery and and people need warehouses. Uh, apartments, this is a departure from the last ten years. We actually went down one percent on our apartment values this year. It's gone up the last nine out of ten and this is the one where it did not. And and I'll get more into that later. And then here's just a ten-year look at historical values. Blue is residential. Uh, orange-ish is commercial-industrial and red is apartment. The things to note on this slide is twenty-fourteen versus twenty-twenty-three. We've gained seven billion dollars in value in the city. Uh, we're sitting at seventeen point six billion dollars in value now, so. You know, quite forty percent increase in value, um, or rather. That's the wrong math, but you get what an eighty percent increase in value. And then you'll look at your apartments and seven hundred ninety-five million dollars in value in twenty-fourteen, up to the two point two-two-five billion this year. So that's nearly tripled in value and and much of that is a function of the new uh, new properties coming online, but. But there's been some serious appreciation over the past two or three years as well up until this year. And commercial, um, not not as much growth as the other two segments, but not as much development in that, uh, segment. Residential statistics, I know this is something everyone's interested in, is, uh, off to the left, assessment year. Median value is the the third column past that. Uh, last year was three hundred fifty-five thousand nine hundred. We're sitting at three sixty-one, eight hundred, so that one point seven percent change. Last year's median went up sixteen percent, so. Uh, I included at the bottom, two thousand and seven, that was our previous peak and that was two forty-seven, nine hundred. And it stayed there through the market crashes up until twenty s- twenty-eighteen is when we exceeded that. Peak in twenty, two thousand and seven, so, uh, quite a bit of time passed just to get back to where we were. But then from twenty-eighteen up to twenty-twenty-three, we've increased forty percent on our median value home. So, um, things things move quickly and. Uh, I'll show you on on the slide following, but there's not a lot of cheap stuff out there anymore. Um, and then off to the right, this is condos, townhomes, co-ops. The the thing to point out here is. We've got about one point fi- five billion dollars in value in these three property types of our ten point two total residential value. So about fifteen percent of our residential value is made up of condos, townhomes or co-ops. Here's the historical interest rate slide I was referencing. Uh, it doesn't pinpoint it on here, but I can tell you the number. January of twenty-two was three point two-two percent average for thirty-year fixed. January of twenty-three was a six point four-eight, so just slightly above double in one year. Uh, you know, this looks pretty drastic here, but if you panned this out another ten, fifteen years, you know, the six point four that we're sitting at currently. That that's pretty average. It it fits the trend curve pretty well, um, but it it is a shock to the system here. Bouncing up so high, so fast. So that ties directly into our, um. Volume statistics here. This is provided by MAR, so Minneapolis area realtors. Um, you'll note that the important thing for me is January versus January, since those are our assessment dates, so that's what I pulled here. Change in new listings down thirty-seven point nine percent in Bloomington, change in closed sales down twenty-nine point six percent. Now, the important thing to to note here is you saw we went up two percent in value about on the single-family residential. Uh, you saw interest rates double. The math doesn't quite check out between those two statist- statistics and this is why. People are locked in sub-three percent mortgages. They're not willing to sell their house and take a six percent mortgage. And typically, when we have a housing crash or housing bubble, it's it's tied directly to hu- high unemployment levels where we have very low unemployment levels, so. No one is selling their house unless they have to. If you're moving up from a first-time home buyer to something slightly larger. You're not gonna wanna double your mortgage payment to get an extra bedroom in your house, so. So that's where we're seeing the the crunch here and I'm not sure where it goes from here. We'll we'll keep an eye and and figure out what the data says, but. You know, most analysts thought we'd be down five, ten percent value at this point. Because the interest rates doubled and and that's just not the case. So here's one of our stratifications and this is market value. Um, so you look to the left and these are groupings of homes, single-family detached homes in those stratifications. And then you look to the right and that's the value change. The parcel count is the second column and you'll note the hundred, hundred to two hundred K total, we have eighty-six homes left in the city. Detached, single-family homes. You'll also note the change in value from twenty-two to twenty-three in the far-right column. Twelve and a half percent for the cheapest stuff, eight point five for the second cheapest level. And then it drops off dramatically where everything else is going up one to two percent. Till you get to the million-dollar-plus range, which is up four point four percent. So those less impacted by, um, interest rates are those still transacting with multiple offers and so on. And still achieving the the prices they want. Then a quick slide about apartments, as I mentioned, nine out of ten last years, increase, increase, increase. We're down one percent this year. And that's even after the new construction added. Um, off to the right, apartment housing stock breakdown. The the interesting part about this chart. S- is we've got eight point three percent of our total stock that was built between twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-two. And then if you look to that little red sliver, little orange sliver, we only added five point seven percent in two decades from nineteen ninety to two thousand and nine. So construction's picking back up. We'll see where it goes from here. I know there's stuff in the pipeline. I can't speak to if developers are still moving forward with the new lending. Uh, environment, but, um, you know, up to this point, we had been adding quite a bit of stock. Commercial-industrial, this just breaks it out into further segments here, so, um. Twenty-twenty-two value, twenty-twenty-three is the next column. Gross change and net change, there's there's an important distinction to make here. Our net change is subtracting the new construction and this is how we typically talk about change. Because, uh, if you look at automotive services at the top there, it says gross change fourteen point nine, but after you chop out the new buildings that were constructed, it's six point eight. So really, the the existing buildings went up six point eight percent, not fourteen point nine. So I'll be talking in net change on this slide. Um, hospitality industry up eight point one. We're we're getting close to occupancy levels and revenue that we had back in twenty-nineteen. We're not there yet. I think we're we're probably around ninety-five percent or so. I can, I can find those actual numbers, but it's it's close. Uh, industrial up that seventeen point nine after net construction. And then, um, if you look down, office buildings, we're at one percent increase and. Pretty much all of the Class A, nice, high-end office, we left flat and and it's because. Companies are figuring out what right-size looks like, what down-size looks like. People are leaving buildings, not signing. Uh, there's kinda this flight for quality where people are leaving downtown and and other buildings to find high amenity buildings, so. Um, things are still shaking out there. Some of the smaller, older office buildings have transacted for higher numbers, but the the newer stuff is is pretty stagnant. And then retail's at the bottom there. That was up one point five percent, so we're seeing a little bounce there, but but not much. And then down at the bottom, that's just a ten-year look of commercial-industrial value. And you'll see a dip there, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two for COVID and note that we're we're back well above twenty nineteen and twenty-twenty here and twenty-twenty-three. So then I just wanted to talk to property tax briefly here, um, and just recall our assessment date, right, one, two, twenty-three. And the preliminary levy is set September of twenty-three. Uh, truth and taxation meetings in November of twenty-three, final levy is set and certified December of twenty-three. Then your taxes are payable May and October of twenty-four. And I think it's important to put this on a slide here and just show that our assessment is set about twelve months before the levy is is certified. We just want want to reiterate, we get this call many, many times a year that. We don't set the assessment to increase the taxes collected. These are two separate processes. They're they're not the same. So I just wanted to clarify, we set our assessment, then the levy is set to determine how much taxes needed to be collected. And I'll go through an example here, um, to show that, you know, increase in value doesn't necessarily mean increase in taxes. So this is our median sale this year, uh, down at the bottom here. It's a nineteen fifty-four-built Rambler, um, and i- it's homestead. So just to note what what the homestead exclusion, I have a few bullets at the top there, but basically. It's progressive in nature. The higher your value of your home, the less of exclusion you get. Once you hit four hundred thirteen thousand eight hundred in value, you no longer get an exclusion. Now, you still wanna be homestead. You still need to be homestead to qualify for a property tax refund and some other programs, so still important. But, um, just note that it does disappear. Um, so down in our example below, we've got the year, the assessment and the taxes payable year, so they're one year after each other. And then you have your EMV, which is our market value we set, and then the taxable market value is is what the value is after the homestead exclusion. So then, following that, we have the percent change year-over-year there for this property and then you'll see the taxes off to the right. So so to note this, um, twenty-one with taxes payable twenty-two, the value went up seven point four-seven. The taxes actually went up eight point two-one. So there are years where your taxes do go up more than the value does. Then you look at twenty-two where the value went up four percent and taxes went down almost five percent. And you'll recall the median home went up sixteen percent, so this home didn't go up nearly as much as its neighbors, so the taxes actually went down that year even though the value was appreciating. So so it summarizes in that right little panel there. Change in value over these five years was thirty-seven point six percent, change in taxes was twenty point six. So I just wanted to reiterate, change in value does not necessitate the equivalent change in taxes. I think that's very important to distinction to make. Um, there's some years like this property where your taxes are going to go down even though the levy went up. And my final slide here, I just wanted to briefly talk about referon- refunds and programs. I think this is very important and there's a lot of money left on the table here. Um, you know, there's there's three property tax refunds. There's for renters, there's the regular and there's a special. Um, the regular and the special are required that your homestead, one has an income restriction, one does not. Kinda summarizes in that chart down below. And, um, the big takeaway here is a a lot of people don't apply because they don't think they qualify or they don't know to apply. No one tells them. If you have a tax preparer, you can ask them. You can ask us, you can ask the Department of Revenue, but, um. Hennepin shared their data from twenty-nineteen. I don't have anything newer. But in twenty-nineteen, they estimated sixty million dollars of property tax refund were left on the table. And that's of people that were homestead, so that doesn't count for anyone who didn't homestead and apply. Um, with the maximum refund of three thousand one forty, assuming they were all regular refund and all would've got the max. That would've been at least twenty thousand households that didn't get a refund they should've. It's more likely closer to thirty thousand people that that just didn't get a refund because they didn't apply. So I think it's really important to ask your tax preparer or or go on the M D O R website and take a look. Um, and just look at the programs available. I also wanted to highlight the senior deferral. And just to clarify, this is a deferral, this is a loan, this is not a refund. But what it does is it limits the amount of taxes you pay at three percent of your income. It is income and age restricted. Uh, but the remainder is paid by the state as a loan and that loan is a variable rate loan, but it will never exceed five percent interest. So i- it's still a good deal if if you're having trouble making those tax payments to get a five percent loan to pay what you can't pay. Um, you do have to repay the loan at the time of sale or time of exit of the program. But it is available. All of this information's on the Minnesota Department of Revenue website. You can call them, you can call us to discuss. Uh, happy to talk through it with you. And most definitely, if you do have someone prepare your taxes, bring up the property tax refund with them. So that is my presentation for this evening. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Bulger. That was, as always, it was, I I, it's a, it's a full presentation. Every year when we hear the assessment reports, it's a full in- full of information and it's always good to hear. It's just interesting and I think good to base a lot of what we do, a lot of what we think of, a lot of what we talk about, based on what we just heard over the last half hour here. Counsel, any questions, Mr. Bulger? Councilmember Alessandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hey, Mr. Bulger, thank you for this. Um, I'm I'm curious, um, uh, if, um. You, uh, have any, uh, particular insights for us as it relates to the conversations you had? With folks as they came through, um, anything that you can, uh, offer us in terms of. I mean, I I'm making some assessment assumptions based on some of the data that you shared, but it but it would be helpful if if, for example. There were any, you know, comments made or any particular items that would give us insights on something, you know, to work on, for example. Um, you know, are there a lot of people who are saying they're deferring, um, work on their houses because of, you know, things? So that shwitty, for example, you know, uh, provide a little bit more information on our home improvement options that they have and other things like this. Anything that you might wanna flag for us?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Alessandro. Um, I would say that that most of the conversations we have, um, there's there's some sort of level of confusion of the process or. You know, I'm assessed this year, taxes next year, timeline issues, um. Anecdotally, we have been hearing some people, more so than than normal, talk about how they're being taxed out of their home or. If if it's worth this much, uh, I'll give you the keys if you cut me a check kinda deal. But yeah, we we have been hearing people struggling and and, um, it's challenging with with the way the market is and values and. You know, if you if you were priced out and wanted to downsize your home, uh, that's definitely not an option in this interest rate environment. You might be paying the same amount for a half the size home at this point, so. Yeah, it's every year, um, you know, we hammer the the property tax refund. We say, you know, look into this. A lot of people don't know it's a thing. Uh, and a lot of people don't have a tax preparer, so no one informs them or they go through some some quick company or online company. And then they never hear about the M-one P R form they need to fill out.
Thanks.
But I think, um, on a permit level, we watch that and we track that to see, you know, are building permits down, are people? Less less inclined to repair their residential homes, so we can put that together after a few more months of data.
Yeah, thanks, appreciate it.
Councilmember Loman.
Thank you, Mr. Just a real quick question on the historical values by property type. Uh, do the condos fall, uh, in in into the apartment or is that in the residential?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilmember Loman, uh, we would consider that residential. So what, while it's apartments technically are classified residential, they're they're class four A, they're, there's, we still bucket them separately. Um, but condos are are same as townhomes and single-family detached.
Thank you. Councilmember Mo.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, can you just explain to me what a co-op is? Cause I just, I don't know what it is.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilmember Mo, I I wish I could. No, I'm kidding. It's it's a very complex, um, system essentially and and they have. Limited equity, full equity, but essentially you you buy your way into a co-op. You don't own the real estate, but there's a very large. Purchase price and then you also pay a monthly fee that's sorta like rent. Um, so it's, they're all structured slightly differently. We have a handful of them here. We have Applewood Points, we have Friendship Villages. Is some sort of co-op. Uh, it it doesn't meet the standards of a normal co-op, but it's it's kinda structured similarly where you you kinda get. Get, uh, the right to move along and for Friendship Village, for instance, you get the right to move along to different levels of care by buying into it. Um, you don't necessarily have the real estate, so you don't, you don't own the real estate you wanna share in the building.
So, kinda piggybacking on the last two questions, uh, looking at the slide here, the assessment summary statistics that you have here. Showing with residential at forty-eight percent of the total, which would then put, you know, commercial and industri-. Commercial-industrial, the apartments, the condos, everything else at about fifty-two percent. Uh, we have had this conversation in the past here that. This fifty-fifty split is not common for a for a for a suburb. An an urban center, you know, outside of the urban core, this is not common for a a first or second ring suburb. To have only only forty-eight percent of the residential assessment statistics go to. go to residential. And so this, this 50-50 split has been unique to Bloomington for a number of years. And we always call it out and it's always interesting to me just because it, it does make us stand out from just about everybody else in the state of Minnesota.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would agree. We, we have very high value commercial properties. We have 45 hotels in the city. We have the Mall of America. We have quite a few Class A office towers that, that don't exist. We have a lot of tall buildings here that most, most suburbs don't have. Outside of Bloomington, there's, there's only a handful of Class A office towers that, that are outside of the downtown area. And we have, I think, what 12, 13, something like that. I'd have to get the actual number for you, but it's, it's significant. So a lot of our commercial value comes from the hospitality in the office.
Yep, I just, as I said, I always think that's, it's interesting to see that. And it's been consistent, maybe a couple of points here and there, but it's been pretty consistent over the years.
And, and just to piggyback that on that, if you'll note on this slide, the residential went from 48.7 of our total down to 48%. So that would indicate a slight shift in property taxes off of the residential property and onto the industrial and commercial property. So that's, that's a silver lining here for, for many people rather than, than few people.
Counsel, any additional questions? All right, this was an information item. We didn't have no action on it, but thank you very much, Mr. Bulger. Well done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our second organizational business item this evening is an update and discussion on our budget. And Kari Carlson is going to update. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. So for tonight, I have some preliminary 2022 year-end financial information to share with you. Some highlights from the 2023 budget book. Overall themes from your feedback on last year's budget process. This year's public engagement plan around the budget. And finally, key dates in this year's budget calendar. So first off, I'll go through the preliminary 2022 financial results for the general fund. And I'm just going to start by, this here is the original 2022 budget for the general fund. So this would have both revenues and expenses that were approved by the council back in December 2021 at 85.3 million. And then here are two pie charts. Again, this is 2022, just showing the breakout of those revenues and expenses for the general fund. So on the left is the revenue chart. And 68% of the general fund revenues are comprised of property taxes. 9% comes from lodging and admission taxes, 7% permit and license revenue. And the remaining sources of revenue include transfers from other funds, grants and program income. On the right is the expense chart with a breakout of expenses by department. And more than half of general fund expenses are comprised of police, fire and public works. The remaining expenses are community development, community services, which includes community outreach and engagement and public health, parks and recreation, finance, legal and administration. So this next slide, so throughout 2022, budget adjustment resolutions were brought to council for approval for items such as carryover of unspent budget from the previous year. Roll over of budget that was encumbered from purchase orders that weren't spent in the previous year, as well as budget adjustments to increase both revenue and expenses for grants that the city received or donations. And so the net result of the 2022 preliminary amended general fund budget was actually a planned spend down of available fund balance in the general fund by 3.3 million. This is the actual, or I should say preliminary actual 2022 year-end general fund financial results. So we'll have our final results after our audit. This is preliminary. But as you can see, this is what was reported to the council at the end of February. For 2022, they're far more favorable than there's, as we're showing that the revenues are higher than the expenses by 2.6 million for the end of 2022. So this positive budget variance is due to lodging tax revenue, admission tax revenue and permit revenue all being much higher than budgeted for 2022, as well as expenses being lower than budgeted. So moving to the 2023 budget. So on December 5th, 2022, the city council approved the 2023 property tax levy of 74.5 million, which was an increase of 9.15% over the 2022 property tax levy. And as you know, the 23 budget focused on the city's strategic plan, Bloomington tomorrow together, by investing in city priorities to cultivate an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be. And as you recall, a major theme from the 23 budget was that it was a significant investment in public safety. 85% of that tax levy increase was an investment in police and fire services. And the 23 budget added three full-time firefighters. In addition to the 18 full-time firefighters that were recently added this week with the safer grant, to address critical staffing issues and begin the transformation in the fire department from a mainly paid on-call part-time department to a hybrid model of full-time and part-time firefighters. And then also in the 23 budget, four police officers were added to help decrease the amount of overtime officers are expected to work to meet basic staffing needs. And there was also an addition, a new position added in dispatch. This slide is our city property tax dollar, just to illustrate that on this representation, that on one tax dollar that for the entire city, 50 cents of that dollar are going to police and fire. 25 cents are going to public works. 16 cents are going to community development, community services, parks and recreation. And then nine cents are going to debt service payments for capital projects like road infrastructure projects and facility improvements. So the annual, the 2023 budget book was published on the city's website on March 1st. It was submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association for consideration of their distinguished budget presentation award that the city has received for 27 years. And there's easy access to this document on the city's website. If you go to the city's website, the main page and click on city budget and scroll down to the bottom, you can see this online document. And we do still print a small number of hard copy budget books. And I distributed them to the council this evening. They were just printed this morning, just so you have easy reference for them. And just some key pages I'd like to point out in the budget book, both online or with your copies right there. There's the city manager's budget message, which is on page 21. There's fund descriptions and structure on page 41. The budget process is explained on page 51. The calendar is on page 55. On page 119, I get this question a lot of the overall budget summary for the entire city. So all 30 funds put together, that's on page 119 as a summary. There's also a lot of times questions on full-time staffing and that's on page 150. And then after that, we have a very detailed, but each department submits information that supports their budget requests. And that starts around page 152. So I just wanted to take a moment to highlight that. And then, as I said, part of the budget book has the city manager's budget message. And that is on pages 21 to 33. And it, it just, it gives great examples of how the city's annual budget brings together the city council priorities and the community priorities and needs and the financial planning. So just next, we had asked the council for their feedback. We met with them to just find out what the council thinks we're currently doing well with the budget process, what changes you'd like to see, maybe ideas for engaging the community. And these next couple of slides I have here are just common themes that we heard from the council that we wanted to share that we're exploring to incorporate into this year's budget process or maybe next year's budget process. So I'm just going to read through these quickly. So some of the comments we had in the discussions were that you appreciated the transparency, the level of community engagement that we've added, meeting people where they're at to engage residents, to continue to work on making the city's finances and budget process straightforward and simple for the public to understand. That we did an excellent job this last year of explaining what was causing the increase in property taxes. Just to keep in mind that the numbers alone can be intimidating and hard to understand. So the corresponding narrative for the budget is important. That it's important to communicate about the investment specifically that's being made in the community. One of the comments was considering a paid intern for additional public engagement in budget. But I have some other ideas about that. That would be nice, have some help, but I have another idea. Consider partnering with schools, community groups, faith community for budget engagement. Maybe a workshop at Creekside for property tax refunds, like the city assessor Tim Bulger was just talking about the senior deferral program that's available. There's comments that the department presentations that we did were pretty in-depth last year that the department heads did and that those were very well done and informative. That we should continue to educate people on how their property values affect their tax levy and the timing of when they can appeal their values with assessing. And that the resources on the city's budget website, the videos and detailed information are very helpful. Just last month, Tim, Tim and I did a video that we put on the city's website just explaining those property tax valuation statements that came out last, last month, as well as the, the property tax statements. Could we designate an amount, an amount of money for a one-time project that the public could weigh in on? Like a resident-driven investment? So that's something we'll explore and bring to you. If that's something that we'd want to include in the tax levy or in the budget for 2024. And then we'd, we'd like to see some more department heads, maybe council members at budget tables in the community, which that last comment leads into my next slide. So we've increased, this is hard to read on here, but just to show you, we've increased the number of events, budget tables that we're going to have this year. And we've spread them out to different locations in the city, different times of the week, different days. There's going to be budget tables at some department open houses, at some events for kids, at concerts, at farmer's market. And so this year I created a signup list for council members and department heads to join me at these public, budget public engagement tables. And I recently sent out a signup list for city council members and I'll send that out again tomorrow and also to department heads. So if there are any events when you are available to join me, it would be wonderful for you to be there and, and be able to talk to residents and have a chance to engage about the budget and spending priority, priorities, not only with me, but also with the council members and department heads, I think would be wonderful. And then finally.
We could also make assignments to that too and just.
Wonderful.
I know who's getting the Brodini magic show. I, I literally just sent you an email saying I'm in for the magic.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you, Councilmember Martin. So this is the, the budget calendar. So the kick, I'll, I, I won't go over every date, but what I'll highlight is we're starting off May 18th. It's a little earlier than normal with the budget kickoff for departments to enter their requests. And then other, other dates I'll highlight is August 21st and November 20th. Those are the special city council budget meetings. And then the 11th of September is preliminary 2024 tax levy. That's when that's set. And then December 4th is when the final 2024 tax levy will be set. So that is all I have for this evening. Any questions?
Well, thank you for this. It's a good, good way to start, a good, to have the printed copies and the printed copy kind of guys. So I appreciate that and appreciate the information and the, the willingness to take the feedback as you did with all the council members. I think we all had an opportunity to, to talk with you about what we liked from last year and what we were hoping to accomplish this year. And so I appreciate that because I think the, the consensus was, or at least my thought, I thought the budget process last year was as good and as robust as we've seen in my years on the council. And looking forward to seeing where you're going to take it again this year because it's, it's very informative. It's very helpful. I think it, it provides great information and I think it, it's fantastic. I mean, it really is. It's very well done. Counsel, any questions or comments for Ms. Carlson? Councilmember Lohman, but I'm sorry, the, the Brodini magic show was taped.
I would be disappearing at that magic show. You know, Mayor, I would say I also agree with your statements. I mean, this has come a long ways from when I first got here on council. I mean, those, those meetings were brutal when we went through our budget. And I think that's the, the most appropriate way to say it. I just, I, you know, hey, it's going to be great to see what this looks like and what we continue to do kind of moving forward. So thank you for your hard work and Lori's work as well and the rest of your team. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I did have one question. I think just to clarify, so when you, you showed the 2022 pie chart of expenditures. And I think that showed the, the total public safety was, it was like 42% for public safety for police and fire. And then when you showed the, the dollar, this 2023 city property tax dollar, it was at 50%. Is there really that 8% increase based on the expenditures we're making in public safety?
Mayor, city council members, those are two different looks at the budget. So the one with the pie charts is only the general fund. And, and that includes revenues that are not property taxes. And then when we're just looking at the property tax dollar, that's just taking the property taxes and splitting that over all the funds. So sorry to be confusing.
That's okay. I'm easily confused sometimes, but that's even, you know, regard, regardless, you know, split it in half. If it's somewhere between 42 and 50% of our, our, our tax dollars are going toward public safety. I think that says a, a lot about our, our commitment to that here in Bloomington. Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think the way I always say it is if 60%, 68% of our revenue is from property tax, every dollar in that 68% is cut this way. Yeah, that makes sense? Yeah. So, so one of the, one of the things that I think gets lost in the shuffle around budget is the, how do I say this? The cost of doing business. So in other words, if we did nothing else, like traditionally speaking, most people get cost of living increases in their salaries, for example, of 3%. I don't know if that number is like even valid anymore in the world. But when we talk about what the, what the, the budget goes to, I think one of the things that is helpful for people to understand is where it is, where, what part of the increase. So for example, when we did our 9% levy, if we, if we had taken out a cost of living adjustments or costs of doing business adjustments of three or three and a half percent, we really only invested 6% of that property tax dollar in new things, of which then 80% of it or 85% of it was police and fire, if you will. I don't know if that's a way, there's a way for us to get to that number. But I think a lot of these numbers change year over year largely due to variability and costs of goods that we need to purchase in, you know, the amount of, of, you know, tax we pay on things or the shift in inventory, supply, demand inventories and things of that nature. You know, I don't know if that's something we track at a granular level. It may be something that we could do at a high level. But I think what, that's one of those questions I'd love to, to consider us finding out what people know about what those things are for us. Like what's the number? You know, what, what would they guess it is and versus what it actually is? And that would require us to do a little bit of, of insight. So I throw that out there just as another, another cut at the data that we might be able to help people understand that when, you know, if we did nothing new and we only had to raise enough taxes to cover the expenses, would that still be three, three and a half percent more than a year ago because of the cost of doing business? Or would it be more or would it be less? I think those things are interesting and I think people can resonate, that can resonate with people because that happens in their own homes as well. Thank you. I'm sure you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Did you ever hand it, Mr. Ripley? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, I thought you raised your hand. Anything else, Counsel? If not, I'm sure we'll see you again soon.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 5.3 on our agenda is a discussion regarding. item 5.3 on our agenda is a discussion regarding a tree assessment ordinance and payment plans. And in my 12 years on the council, I can say this is the first time I've heard this as an agenda topic. I don't remember talking about this in the past.
Mayor and council, it is the first time.
Very good. Ms. Economy Sholder, good evening, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Just clicking through here. So just some background information on the side. In 2017, 63 properties in Bloomington received bills and payment plans and assessments. At that time, it was mainly Emerald Ashport and, excuse me, Dutch Elm and Oakwilt. And as you can see, starting in about 2020, on the largest increase is because of Emerald Ashport. So in 2022, it was 157 properties, over 150% increase when we brought to the city council back in September, this change of the numbers, the change in amounts, the council had a brief discussion about, is there something that we can change? Because currently in our ordinance, it's only a one-year assessment at an 8% interest rate. And we did some research, and as we go through that, we're able to expand that to match what's at the state is, up to a 10-year portion. So again, number of trees and the total charges, in 2017, it was just under $60,000, and in 2022, $300,000. So average invoice, again, under $1,000 in 2017, and just under $2,000 in 2022. Again, you just see some of the same information, you can see just the number of total invoices over the years, you can see the total amount invoiced, and the average, how it's increased over that period of time. And then we did some breakout of, looking at just price points of where things were at. So in 2022, of that just under $300,000 of total cost, 65 of those properties were under $1,200, and then it broke out. So we would move that around, so approximately 60% of the numbers were after that first cutoff. They were between $1,200 and $8,000. So again, current ordinance is one-year assessment, they would have to pay the entire amount in their next property tax bill at an 8% interest rate. We are looking at some payment plan options, four different ones currently are in the model that we'll walk you through at a 6.5% interest rate. So right now, we're looking at a one-year, for if it's $1,200 or less, a one-year assessment at 6.5%. If it's between $1,200 and $3,000, it is three years, 3,000 to 6,000, five years, and over 6,000 would be 10 years. And then we looked at a couple other comparison cities, and they have different interest rates. App Valley has four different plans, and they're still charging the max understate statute that we can go, it's a 8%. Manchaca's a little bit less, at 5.5%, and Adina's at the 6.5%, which is where we're at at our interest rate. And those were the different comparisons we have. And I think there was a question on if we can have more options, we could have whatever variety the city council would like, or where they would like the price point change. So we can make whatever adjustments, because this is a discussion item, and we would bring whatever the council would like differently back when we come back on May 1st with the ordinance change and a fee schedule change. After that, it's just discussion, so I'll leave this one back up for questions.
Thank you for this. Council discussion, before we dive into it, I'm just going to say the increases are just staggering, not just the cost of tree removal is just absolutely unbelievable, to see it go up 400% like that in five years.
And part of the increase is that, well, part of it is the Emerald Ashport is not dying with our cold weather. We don't have enough of it for a long enough period of time for it to die. And even in northern Minnesota, it's just not cold enough for long enough that it's wiping out a lot of trees. And then there's an abundance of trees being removed, so the price to dispose of them is increasing, too.
And I've got to imagine, knowing ash trees, they're big trees, too, and it's got to take some work, but that number's just stunning to me. Councilmember Lohman, and then I saw another hand up, Councilmember DeLisandro, Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. So I don't know which study I read this at some time back, that, you know, the average American has something where in the neighborhood of $400 for emergencies. And so I started asking the question as I looked at this, you know, if you kind of take 400, you multiply that by 10, that's about 4,000. I wonder if, for those who are, you know, we talk about equity and inclusion and that type of thing, or those who are just challenged from an economic kind of standpoint, I wonder if it makes some sense to kind of, you know, kind of look at how to redo some of these ladders, if they were, or options for levy terms that we have in here. So I just wonder with that, you know, that first one, is there a way to maybe, does it make sense to you? I don't know what the impact is to the city, you know, by rolling this out or pushing it out to 10 years for more of these, but I'm just kind of curious to see what other folks think about kind of changing some of those, for those of us who are here, who may be impacted. I know of a couple people in my district who were impacted by that, and paying was a real problem. So I just throw that out there.
Mayor and council, we would end up paying the vendor what the cost is on these assessments, and then it would just take time to repay the city. So that's where the interest rate comes back, is repaying the city the price on that. It's how long to carry for it. And currently, the residents that are paying these are paying these all in one year. So they seem to be managing some of this, but we can move the rates around. If you want to go back just a couple more slides, just looking at the average... So the average in 2017 was $948. The average now for each one is $1,800. So majority of them would not even fall in that $1,200 range. They would fall above that, even for one tree. It's quite high.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, just thank you for bringing this forward. I remember the conversation we had, it triggered in part by some resident requests, and I know Councilmember Martin asked for some work on this specifically, so thank you. This is great. A quick question, is the tree removal, these are for, so these 157 invoices are right-of-way trees for which the user, the resident was responsible? Is that how that works? Or is it, I mean, I can't call the city and ask for the tree in my backyard to be pulled down, right? It needs to be right-of-way? Am I right about that?
Ms. Manderscheid, I think can clarify things for us.
Mayor members, state law provides some enabling authority for cities to do these types of special assessments. It's in 429.101. There's two different ones that apply to trees. The one is the trimming and care of trees and the removal of unsound trees from any street. And then the other one that we come across often is the treatment and removal of insect-infested or diseased trees on private property. And there's some more to it, but oftentimes, it's my understanding that these are diseased trees. Obviously, we saw a large influx with Emerald Ashport, but there are other infestations that have moved through in the past.
Okay, so it's, a diseased tree can be anywhere on a private property, and if it's, but it has to be found by the city in order for it to be assessed, then? Is that, am I reading that correctly? Okay. So once again, I can't call up the city and go, "I think I have a diseased tree, come look at it." Oh, I could. You can. Okay. All right. That's helpful. So I think, I think a flattening this makes some sense to me. You know, four tiers versus three tiers, I'm not 100% sure I know, like, if that makes, I just makes it harder for everybody, I don't know. Could we go back to the slide where we have the tiers defined? That's great, thanks. Yeah, either way is fine. Very good. Yeah, so I'm wondering if it makes sense to say, this maybe is a silly way to do this, but if it's under 3,000, they can pick one- or three-year terms, if it's over 3,000, they can pick five- or 10-year terms. I don't know, something like that, just to make it nice and smooth, I don't know if that's, you know, gets where Councilmember Lohman is thinking about it here, which is, you know, making it possible for that, like, you know, in that $3,000 bucket, if that is something that we can have for certain individuals, spread out over a longer period of time. But, you know, I don't, to me, the fact is, as you mentioned, the average is going to be under that 3,000 for the vast majority of folks that are going to take advantage of this. The other thing I think we talked about, and I don't know if this is something that is to be thrown in here, is I'd love to see some kind of incentive for replacing the trees. So if you, I know we have a $50, like, tree purchase option or something to that effect, but if we thought about, hey, if you commit to planting a tree and replacement for this, we'll waive that $50 and bring you a tree, or something like that, just to incentivize that we replace these trees as quickly as we possibly can. I don't, I realize that that's not the specific discussion, but if we're going to roll out a program, I'd like it to be comprehensive in terms of its education to the public. So, yeah, I'm all, I mean, I think this is great, I appreciate the reduction in the interest rate, I appreciate the tiering structure, I think that will help people. I guess kind of ambivalent on how many we have, but that stratification seemed to make sense to me, one to three years if you're under, maybe it's under five, over five, or under two, over two, and then who cares how high it goes? Because it seems like the average is about $1,800 right now, so that gives us room to move over the next five years, as it probably goes up to $2,500 or something like that in the next five years.
Actually, your comments, Councilmember brought up a question.
Yeah.
When you talk about replacement. Ms. Economy Sholder, when we're talking about the prices that you mentioned earlier, does that include stump removal, or is that just cutting the tree down?
Mayor and council, I'm not aware of the difference in the price.
Mr. Brugge?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, we do have our public works director on the meeting, so we could probably bring in Carl to answer that question. My understanding is it is typically just the tree removal, the stumping is an additional cost.
And the stumping can be a significant additional cost.
It can, yeah. And Mr. Keel's available as well.
Mr. Keel, are you with us? Carl, you there? Your name is there.
I'm sorry, Mayor, that was a little technical difficulty there, getting on. But yes, on the question of, does that include stump removal? Yes, it does.
Oh, it does.
And the project also, just to clarify, these are for private trees, so these are all on private property, under the responsibility of the homeowner. Right-of-way trees that are moved are done at city cost.
Okay. So those average costs that we saw, that we were commenting on, how high they were, but they do include not only taking the tree down, but removing the stump as well?
Yes, typically, yes.
Good. That probably helps to explain the high cost, but it's still a pretty darn high cost. Well, thank you for that. Mr. Keel, do you have anything to add to the discussion here this evening, as you've been listening and watching?
No, nothing more to add. I think good questions.
Very good. Any questions of Mr. Keel while we have him? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Keel. Just to clarify, right-of-way versus private property, the front easement over the yard is private property, correct? That would not be covered by the city?
No, the front portion adjacent to the street, roughly 15 feet, the easement, is considered right-of-way, so that's a city cost. So these would be trees that are beyond that 15, roughly 15-foot behind the curb mark.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, because I think that impacts a lot of people with those trees close to there. I don't know if I have any other questions for Mr. Keel, I do have other questions, but...
We can be as flexible as possible here. Councilmember Nelson, go ahead, any other questions?
How, can you remind me of what our assessment policy is for street improvements? Because I believe we have a similar program where you can either pay it, or you can make payments at an interest rate. What is the interest rate on those, and what are the terms of those? And the reason I ask is just consistency, ease for our accounting team, and ease for our residents to understand it. Obviously, the costs are slightly different on those, which I think gets to Councilmember DeLisandro's point, that, you know, some of the larger expenses may make sense to tie it over a long period, but what are those like?
So Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, so for road improvements, when a letter goes out in September to the residents, which is the final cost of what the road reconstruction portion is for the resident, then they could start making their, I would call it a pending assessment amount, they can make payment amounts in September, October, right before the end of November, they can make three payments to pay it off during that. And wherever we're at with that amount for that road reconstruction at the end of November, what's left there can go off to assessment for 10 years. The trees currently were doing a lot of payment plans on them, so that they can make payment plans and make payments each month during the period. So it will depend on the timing of when the tree comes down, when we invoice them. So if the tree came down in February, we invoice them in March, they can make payments from March all the way through November and pay that down. Or they don't have to pay anything until that period of time. So on July 1st, they would get a letter telling them, like we do with civil fines and delinquent utility bills and those types, they get a letter, and we would tell them upfront in February, when the tree came down, what's coming, and have it all laid out for them.
Okay. So it seems like fairly different processes, one goes through assessing, one is managed by the city, the county staff. Okay, thank you. And then, do people have the right to just hire their own company to take these trees down? Okay. So if they wanted to get multiple bids and all that, they could?
Yes, they can.
They could potentially take it down themselves if they were so equipped, but no? They do? Okay. I don't have those skills, so I don't know. So I could, if it was about four feet or less, I could probably take it down myself, but, so, and then the final question I had was, are there any potential prepayment penalties? So if somebody selected a five-year option, could they just pay extra and not continue to accrue the interest and things like that and pay it off in two years, three years, whatever their cash flow allowed?
So just to clarify, when we would set up these payment amounts and staff turnover to allow a customer to keep figuring out how they want to do it versus the dollar amount, I mean, I'd like to know more about how the council wants to do an option. So if a customer wants this, this, and this, versus, okay, the dollar amount falls here, so we know we do this, and we're consistent of how we do that, staff turnover could make them really go crazy. You know, if we're basing this off a certain three-year period, a five-year period, a 10-year period, or, you know, if you don't even want any one year, we can get rid of a one year and just move it all down to two, three, five, and 10. But to give customers options. But once it's assessed, just like any other assessment, they can prepay, you know, say it's two years in, they can prepay it plus that year of interest, and it's gone. No penalty. They do have to pay the interest for that year, like any other assessment at this county.
Okay. So you'd like to have stability in the, if they were going to not do the one-time payment, you like to have stability in the cost? And that, I think, from my perspective, it makes sense. I mean, the reality is, the city is not a bank, it doesn't manage loans, these aren't loans, we don't have all these different terms, whereas, you know, if you wanted to, you could simply go get a personal loan to cover the cost of it, and then you would be able to deal with the bank and prepay it, or whatever you wanted to do. and then you would be able to deal with the bank and prepay it, or whatever you wanted to do. So I just wanted to just understand that. If it, it sounds like it's easiest for staff, makes the most sense, it's probably the most fiscally prudent, in my mind, for the, for the city to not have to manage all these different variables, like you either set it up at this much per month, or you set it up at that much per month, and then it's done. Okay, thank you.
And then Mayor and Council, just to make a comment. This fee structure would be in our Appendix A, and as we see the fees changing, or the rates of costs increasing on the changes, we would bring it back to council to update the fee schedule, too.
Ms. Manderscheid, anything to add to that?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson, you're clear on that now? We're good? Councilmember Martin?
Thank you very much, Mayor. And, and thank you for, for bringing this back. I know I've heard from a couple residents, especially seniors on fixed incomes, the tree comes down, and they say, what do I do now? So this is really heartening to see, I appreciate it. In general, just to make sure I heard correctly, so if somebody decides they want to go, say, with the, the three-year plan, their finances stabilize, they're in a better spot a year in, they could pay off the remainder of that and the interest and be fine?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. And just, I guess, for, for preferences sake, I'm comfortable with what you have presented here. But considering, I'm not sure who would be in, having an acute financial shortfall, I, I would assume they would be looking for at least two years to kind of stabilize or stretch that out, as opposed to the one-year option. So if we're looking to simplify, to your earlier point, I could see dropping that, but otherwise, I support what's here. And I will say, I have really no tree-cutting skills either in particular, but it has not stopped me. So give me a call, Councilmember Nelson.
Councilmember Delisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as a follow-up on that, I think, I think if I understood the original comment, if I, if I have an assessed tree taken down in March, and you assess it to me, I have until the November bill essentially to pay that off without any interest whatsoever. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, so that could be almost, I mean, that's six months, seven months without interest if I chose to pay it. And I can pay that in payments if I wanted to, I assume, or I can pay it all in November. Okay. So then, at that point, we're talking about another year on top of that. So I'm wondering if, if it, if it is, it would essentially be almost three years, I think, then, if we, if, if that first six or seven months is interest-free, followed by a year's worth of interest at six and, six and a half percent. Yeah, I, I don't, I, I think making it as simple as possible makes sense to me, and if, if it's, if there's three options, I'm, I think that's just easier. One, three, and something else. I don't know if 10 is enough. I mean, I, to me, 10 seems like a long time for something that is averaging $1,800 right now. So maybe it's, you know, two, three, five is our choices, or something to that effect. I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm for three, I think, if, if you're asking for discussion items. I think three's fine. I think, you know, anything above, like, 3,000, make it five years. And if, if we get to a point where we are charging people $6,000 for tree removal, there's a whole other conversation about why we're all not in the tree-removal business, if that's the case. So I think that's, that's the last I, I think I have to say on it. I just want to make sure I had, was clear on the timetable, and it sounds like for most people, even after they receive the bill, they have several months interest-free to try to make payments on it if they want to, at this stage.
Mayor and Councilmember Delisandro, it could be more than one tree. They could have three, four, five, six trees in their backyard that come down all at the two, you know? So it might not be that hard to reach six grand.
Hmm. Would you mind pulling the slide back again that shows the, the tree distribution? Yeah, thanks.
This is just one invoice, so it could be, so that, there was three invoices in the neighborhood of $7,000 to $8,000, and one invoice over $8,000. So those would be multiple trees.
Mm-hmm. Okay, fair enough. I still feel like over five, five years or something.
And I, and I do want to weigh in on Councilmember Delisandro. Just to be clear, you've, you've used language a couple of times, and I want to make sure you understand the process here. I think what Ms. Manderscheid told us, if, if somebody has a diseased tree in the backyard, and our city tree inspectors see it, they basically go in, they tag it, and they say, remove your tree.
Yep.
And then the homeowner has the opportunity, they can either contract individually, and if they're not able to do it, then the city steps in. So, I mean, it's, I, I just, there, there was language a couple of times where it was like, the city was going to go in and take down your tree. Well, no, this, this is, this is a process that...
Oh, yes, assuming that's what the homeowner agrees to and everything else. Yes, of course. Yes, thanks. Sorry for the lack of clarity on my part.
Just wanted to clarify in case somebody was watching, was confused by it.
Yes, yes, nobody wants to take it. I hate the fact that we're taking trees down at all, which is why I'm still hoping we can get a replacement tree gifted to these folks if they take advantage of it.
Got it.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with a lot with what Councilmember Delisandro has said, but I do like the proposed four-tier, because I, I don't think, it, it could be encouraging to a resident to say, oh, I could just stretch this out over 10 years, and then we are acting kind of like a bank then. And so I do like that it encourages, it has the tiers to allow flexibility if people need it, but it isn't there to encourage people to use us like that. And I know debt is a huge issue in this country, and I'm sure in, in this city as well, and that's not something that I want to encourage or support for our residents here, because I know what debt does and how it limits the upward mobility and growth. And so I do like the proposed tiering.
Councilmember Lowman?
Well, I may be the only person, but I, I don't like the tiering. I, I do think that there's some additional, I mean, if you get to the point where you, you gotta use the city to do it, you know, I think you really are hard up. And so I, I would like to see, but you know what? We've got to start somewhere. But, you know, I think, you know, right now, we've got one a year at 8%. You know, most of those things have fallen within that, so my question would be, won't we just keep the one year and move on with it? So I, I think that, you know, just from, you know, the experiences I've had, I had a couple of folks who've come to me, you know, and, you know, happened to just have a private sector person who could, who could get it in much cheaper than, than what the city could do, because what they were quoting, because they had multiple trees, and they had a, you know, a single-parent family, and they were trying to figure out how to pay for the stuff and get it down in that one-year term. And that was a significant, uh, uh, issue for them, and it, and it wasn't really a, you know, a debt issue unless they wanted to get it put on a credit card, so, which would be significantly higher than, you know, as 8% or a, or a 6.5%. So I just think for some residents, and I guess, you know, we're just talking about this now, I'd like to see staff have an equity and inclusion review of this to see how this impacts those, those homeowners and those folks who are, you know, struggling the most within the city. I don't know if there's a way to even do that, but how this, how this would, would impact them. So, you know, maybe there's no impact at all? Maybe we should just keep it the way it is? So...
I think that, so what I'm hearing is a, a couple of things. I'm hearing that the, the tiering structure, I think people agree with, it's just a matter of, you know, moving the, moving the, the levels here and there. I've heard from a couple of folks that they're, they're good with the four, and we could talk about this. But to maybe get an assessment done, run it through the, the race, race and equity, and the whole equity process that we do to make sure that we're okay with that. And I do like Councilmember Delisandro's idea, and if we could somehow tie this in with tree replacement, I mean, we, we can do it at city cost, but I think there's also, there are programs that we could apply for as well. Grant programs that could help us and get our feet on the ground if we wanted to do this, and especially with, we know in the coming years, the number of ash trees that are going to come down are pretty significant. So if we could have either at low or no cost tree replacement for folks that would do this, that, that are looking at this, it would be, if we could tie it into this somehow, I think it'd be very helpful. And again, ideally, I, I'm sure there, there's got to be grant programming out there somewhere for, for tree removal and urban reforestation for this.
Mayor and Council, currently, I believe Habitat for Humanity has a grant program that first come, first served, that I think we've been pushing out for people that have been contacting us, for them to work through that piece first, to see if they can get their tree down.
Okay. So do you have enough information here, Council? Are we comfortable with the feedback we've provided? We'll come back, and we'll have this discussion in the future, coming up soon, sometime soon. So, very good. End of May, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item five, thank you, thank you, Mr. Keel. Thanks, Carl. Item 5.4, under Organizational Business, is an update on our 98th Street study. And I see Mr. Roberts from our Engineering Department, and I think he brought a guest along as well from Bolton &amp; Mink, and I'll let you introduce that, your guest for us, and kick off this whole subject for us. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you. Kirk Roberts, Traffic and Transportation Engineer from the city. As the mayor mentioned, I'm from the Engineering Department in Public Works. I'm here on behalf of the city engineer Julie Long, who's also here, and then Carl Keel, who's with us out there in the ether. The 98th Street study that we're, is underway right now, starts out at James Avenue, just off of the corner of City Hall here, extends over to 35W and terminates at Lyndale Avenue. The interchange at 35W and 98th Street has always been recognized as a somewhat key interchange in the city. It's also, from a transportation perspective, and as it relates to land use, it's, it's quite critical, too. In recent years, it's also grown as a trans, as a transit hub. So there was a long-term plan for the 98th Street at 35W interchange developed in the 1990s, and that's what we're looking at here. North is oriented to the top. Part of that interchange has been built. The, the ramps on the upper right-hand side, or upper left-hand side are existing. The lower right are planned, and that's what brings us to the study. So this document was prepared, this study was done, it was adopted by the county, the city, and the state as well, and so it's sort of the standing plan for the interchange. Once that plan was done, the city and Met Council started to acquire parcels in that area to develop those ramps in conjunction with the long-term plan. In the meantime, Metro Transit used a few of those lots for, for some transit operations. That transit use has grown over the years to become what we now know as the 98th Street Transit Station. It's a very successful transit station, and it's one of two key transit facilities in the city of Bloomington. The, just recently, this became one of two stops for the Orange Line Bus Rapid Transit system that runs through the city between Burnsville and downtown Minneapolis. It also serves as a transfer point for numerous local routes, including those that serve Normandale Community College, Old Chocopee Road, the amenities on Lyndale, Nicolet, and just all over the city. So it's a, it's a pretty significant transit hub. So thinking about putting freeway ramps through that transit hub is, whatever they were thinking in the 90s, I think we have a different perspective on that interchange now, and we need to come up with a different plan. So that brings us to the study. We're looking to see if we, obviously preserving that transit use is a key thing, but not just preserving it, perhaps enhancing it. One of the things that Metro Transit's interested in doing, and as well as the Bloomington HRA, is envisioning some transit-oriented development for the area. And how that would translate into this area would be multifamily housing above the transit station. This would be suited towards transit-dependent population. It's a, an area that's not well-served, and, and so there's interest from both the Bloomington HRA and Met Transit in seeing if something like that's possible. Another key consideration is the Lyndale Avenue retrofit plan, which, for those of you who remember that a couple of years ago, envisions this area as suitable for higher-density housing that's built upwards, increasing density. Can we, can this interchange handle the traffic from that, and the density coming from that? As well as, we want to see if it can serve non-motorized populations, hiker, walkers, bikers, and things like that, better than it does now. And then, so, just in brief, the study goals are to develop a long-term plan for the interchange that preserves and enhances the transit at the station, identify near- and long-term changes to improve conditions for non-motorized users all throughout the corridor, including the crossing here at 98th Street and Old Chocopee Road. There's some issues there that people are probably familiar with. Improve safety for all users, and one of the things we really looked hard at is engaging with the communities that are not traditionally served, we don't often hear from in these studies, and really work hard to engage with that. So to do that work, we brought on Bolton &amp; Mink, and we've got a good set of partners on here that have been engaged as this study is advanced for. That includes the Minnesota Department of Transportation, Hennepin County, Metro Transit, Met Council, the HRA planning, and so on, and they've all been wonderful partners. To talk about the details of the study, I brought forth Brian Nemeth from Bolton &amp; Mink. I don't want to steal Brian's thunder, but the answer to the question is, yes, this interchange can do all those things into the future, and we've got plans to do that. So to talk about those, Brian Nemeth.
Good evening, Mr. Nemeth, welcome.
Thank you. I'll just kind of forward on here. I'll just give you a little bit of background on the corridor. So for first things, looking at the study is, you know, what are the different operations that we have on the corridor? What is the safety of the corridor? There've been a number of pedestrian and bicyclist crashes. You'll notice there that there have been four bicyclist crashes at DuPont Avenue and 98th Street. Those primarily have been involving an eastbound right-turning vehicle or a northbound right-turning vehicle. So we know that pedestrians and bicyclists use this corridor, and they have trouble navigating the corridor. Additionally, we engage with the community to understand what are the concerns and what issues they have on the corridor, and understanding where they have wishes and how they want to see this corridor change in the future. So initially, we developed some concepts, and there was a lot going on in this, this slide. We looked at kind of three areas of the corridor. The first one was focusing on the west, on Old Chocopee Road, near the railroad here, and including up over to City Hall. The second area was looking at the I-35W interchange and DuPont Avenue, and the third one was looking at Lyndale Avenue. So individually, looking at each one of these intersection areas, and developing approximately five concepts in each one of these to see what the public likes, and to understand what the concerns are, and does it meet some of the concerns that they had. So engagement activities to date, we started in the last summer with some focus conversations, pop-up events at the farmer's market, also at the transit station, meeting with some of the community groups that traditionally aren't one of the ones that would go to the open houses and other events to understand what they see on the corridor, what their concerns were. And then we had an open house in December, again, presenting these different intersection concepts, and understanding, you know, what did they see, what did they have concerns about? And then we also had some online comment period with that open house in December. We know that weather sometimes can be an issue, and having a good online comment period would enhance what we're providing to everybody. Give a little more information on that. We did have that open comment period for about four weeks. We had 750 people online have visited the website. Over that time period, we did have 90 different people engage and provide comments either at the open house or at online. This has been, this has been very good. This is a, a much more engagement than usually we see on a lot of these studies. So this is a good, that we're getting people out there, and that people are recognizing what's available to them. We will have another open house coming up here in May, the beginning of May, that will also be presenting some more of this information, too. Through those open houses and through the online engagement, we want to kind of like consolidate some of the information that we had of what the major concerns were on the corridor. Looking on the west end of the corridor, near the railroad, looking at where Old Chocopee Road and 98th Street meet, a lot of concern about eliminating that northbound merge. So currently, the traffic on Old Chocopee Road has to merge down from two lanes to one as they make that free right turn. And then concurrently with that, they also, there's a weaving occurs that, from that right turn, if you want to go northbound on 35W, that you need to weave across all those lanes before DuPont Avenue, which causes a lot of traffic friction in that area. There's also concerns with pedestrians about a signalized crossing. Currently, there is no signalized crossing between James Avenue and DuPont Avenue. It's a complete dead zone. There are also bus stops in between those two areas. So we know that there's been an interest of trying to provide at least another crossing in that area. Along with that, we also have, you know, the long-term vision... Along with that, we also have, you know, the long-term vision for trying to provide some more increased pedestrian and bicyclist space. A little bit of controversy, a little bit of question between different groups of like, where do you put that? Do you put it on the north side? Do you put it on the south side? Looking at, you know, at least primarily on the beginning side is looking at on the south side, there's a little more room, a little more right-of-way available. And also, the existing bridge has a wider sidewalk on that side, too. Additionally, for pedestrians, eliminating some of the channelized right turns, so the southbound right-channelized turns coming off the freeway, high-speed vehicles come off there at a high speed, don't necessarily looking, not looking for pedestrians. Can we bring that up close to the intersection? Can we get rid of that? Same kind of thing applies at Lyndale Avenue. We have three of the four corners also have free rights. Again, you have a higher speed of vehicle that kind of comes on there. Pedestrians are not protected at all. Is there a way that we can reduce that, those speeds and improve those pedestrian crossings? With that, we also have some of those free rights at the freeway interchange. Again, can we, you know, slow down vehicles? Can we make it a little bit easier for pedestrians to cross those, even though they're there? And then at Lyndale Avenue, looking at, you know, getting rid of those free rights, but then also shortening the pedestrian crossings. Currently, pedestrians have complained about the long pedestrian wait times that they have to have to cross, especially 98th Street, but also some comments have been on Lyndale Avenue. Additionally, with any of those changes that we're making, make sure that we're maintaining capacity mobility. People see that there's a lot of traffic that needs to get through that intersection at Lyndale Avenue, and they're close to other intersections, other signalized intersections, that if we don't maintain some mobility at that intersection, we don't want to make sure that doesn't affect the other intersections around there. So, not only looking at existing conditions, we're also looking at future conditions, looking at development, redevelopment opportunities, looking at the Lyndale retrofit plan, that would be on the northwest corner here of Lyndale and 98th Street, looking at potential redevelopment in that shopping mall area, the car dealership area over the long term. Also looking at, again, that Kirk had mentioned, at the transit station, looking at adding some potential parking ramp for transits and commercial, some apartments there. And then also looking at, you know, there's a lot of pedestrian, some, a lot of parking lot space that's unused in the Festival Foods parking lot, that there is a potential that there could be some development there. So, we wanted to make sure that we're accounting for potential redevelopment, not to say that there's something planned, that there's something on the short-term horizon, but we want to make sure that we're accounting for that, and so we're accounting for those traffic increases that could be there. Through those initial intersection concepts and the comments that we received, and again, what the area concerns are, we developed in the two midterm kind of corridor concepts. So, this is looking at, you know, what are the two concepts in each one of these different intersection areas that kind of rose to the top, that were more acceptable to the agencies that were reviewing them, that would also solve the problems that everybody was looking at. I'm not going to go into too much detail on these, there's a lot in there, but we can, if anybody wants to go into that. So, we have two different little concepts here. Again, what we're going to look at is refining these concepts, going through with the agencies a little bit more, understanding what kind of right-of-way impacts we'd have with these, and kind of going through that. In addition, we have a long-term corridor concept. If you look at, I forgot to mention that, on the midterm concepts, is really keeping the existing bridge the way it is. MnDOT has done some rehab on that bridge quite a few years in the past, but they still consider, the bridge life could be about 20 to 30 years currently. So, that bridge is going to, is anticipated to be around for a little bit, for, at least by MnDOT. And we understand that there are some limitations to it. There isn't enough right room on there for pedestrians, especially on the north side of the bridge, and how that affects this whole interchange concept. So, the original interchange concept said, we need to add more ramps. Well, we'll need to rebuild the bridge to add those ramps, but we're really not going to increase the capacity of the actual bridge. So, just make it longer, make it higher, so that ramps can get underneath it. So, this is looking at, you know, if we need to keep this bridge around, what can we do on the outside of that? And then long-term is looking at replacing that bridge. So, if they're going to have to replace the bridge anyways for another project, could we replace this bridge and add the capacity that those ramps would initially provide? And then additionally with this, we would, this area in purple would be the areas which that midterm, so anything you build under, you know, a shorter time period, can also be applied to a longer-term project. So, that if you come through with a project later and just replace the bridge, try to keep it in between DuPont and really Aldrich on your, on your limits. So, next steps, we'll go through a public agency critical review, that's Hennepin County Public Works, actually, later this week. We'll determine that preferred concept, what those preferred concepts, we'll get those onto the website, so both a midterm and a long-term. We'll refine those preferred, the preferred concept based on some public comments and also other agency comments that we get. And then we'll have a final concept, we'll present the final concept to the public. We currently have an open house preliminary scheduled for the beginning of May. We'll be getting that out here real soon. And then we'll have the final study to HRA and City Council in the summer. And just to provide a summary, all the concepts that we have so far, achieved the study goal, study and project goals, provide a long-term plan for the interchange that does not require acquiring that property from Metro Transit for those ramps, preserving and enhancing that transit station, maintaining vehicular mobility, including transit, enhancing non-motorized traffic safety, especially across the entire corridor from City Hall all the way to Lyndale Avenue, providing, improving safety for all users, providing less time that the, that there's conflicts between pedestrians and the vehicles, and then allowing for traffic growth due to development or redevelopment in the area. And then eventually replace that 98th Street Bridge over I-35W. So, any questions? Lot to go through there really quickly.
And you did a very nice job. Thank you very much for that. Appreciate the information. Appreciate also everything that you went through, checked a box in my mind, thinking, yeah, you've got to eliminate the weave if you're going to, from that Old Chocopee Road to get over to go north on the freeway, or the, that, you know, just that mess that goes on there every single morning and backs everything up, the risk to pedestrians. I've, I've tried to get from my house to the transit station, both on foot and on bicycle, and it's white-knuckle the whole way trying to get there. So, to do that, it all makes good sense, so I appreciate everything that you've done, it seems to me, or everything that you brought up in the, in your findings here, it makes good sense, and I appreciate the thought that has gone into this. I am curious, you had a slide there with the partners that you've been working with, appreciate that as well. Curious to hear what the feedback or the reactions have been from MnDOT regarding the bridge possibility, and our friends at Met Transit regarding the park-and-ride, what they're thinking and what their long-term visions are, not only for that site, but also even bigger picture and where this would fit in their priority list.
Yep. I could speak to MnDOT. MnDOT, I mean, if you've dealt with MnDOT a lot lately versus what you had dealt with them in the past, MnDOT is much more open to, you know, providing and improving these facilities, especially pedestrian facilities. Their ADA group has been up front and center, providing comments. MnDOT does currently have a plan to replace the two traffic signals at the interchange. With that, they did indicate that MnDOT ADA has not commented on it, and some of these potential improvements that we're proposing here could possibly be implemented by MnDOT as part of that, those projects. So, MnDOT has been very acceptable to it. Met Council has been one of the ones that has been really making sure that, on a regional basis, that, you know, that plan for those ramps, make sure that if those ramps aren't needed, make sure that we can show that it can be, can be met with other improvements as we're looking at replacing that bridge in the long-term future, and make sure that's consistent with what they're looking at. And then Metro Transit comments have been so far is that, you know, that they are looking at the north end of that site of doing some potential, you know, open to potential redevelopment there, do want to make sure they do have some parking there for park-and-ride, because they do realize that people do use that for park-and-ride, too.
Thank you. Council questions, comments? Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. Fantastic summary of a lot of things that are going on there. I really do appreciate, you know, both from staff and from yourself there, in an area that is really a place where just about almost every Bloomington resident kind of makes their way across the city. It's really a connecting place for everyone to go. And so, as I look at that, and I assume now that since we're at the beginning stages of this, that staff will, you know, look at how sustainability will be woven and placed into this as well. And then I'm always curious, and I always ask about roundabouts, if there's any way to, I know I get a little chuckle there, out of that. And again, you don't need to answer that now, that can come much later on. I don't want to, want to build on that time. I also, my understanding was that that 35W bridge, the section that we have there, is that similar to the, to the construction that was, that was replaced further up on 35, the one that collapsed? Someone had told me that at some point in time, that that was a similar bridge construction, but maybe, maybe I'm mistaken, maybe it's a different bridge they're talking about. I just was curious about that and if that's going to be at all in this longer concept replaced at any point.
Not that I know of. I'm not sure the similarities with other bridges that we have. One thing that did show up during our study, we did look at the existing bridge structure out there. Actually, there's, there's two spans out there, one's for westbound and one's for eastbound. They are actually at different levels, so which makes any kind of, we were looking at potentially trying to bridge the gap between them and try to provide, you know, move the median or anything like that, and realize that both bridge structures are actually at different elevations, and requires, since they would have different settling abilities there, that any retrofit of the existing bridge to kind of change what's going to happen on the westbound or eastbound, it makes it very difficult. So, that's one thing we did find out with the bridge, and then again, looking at some of those bridge reports that MnDOT indicated that, you know, rehab that they have done in the past, that they still anticipate that 30, that 20 to 30-year life.
Okay. That was my question, lifespan of that. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Council, additional questions, comments? All right. Well, appreciate the work that's gone into this so far, and I appreciate also the public engagement that's coming up, the outreach and engagement. I think that'll be an important part, and we'll do our part as well to do what we can, and I just let the city manager know that this is going to be a topic of the council minute, so Mr. Roberts, you might be doing some editing for me. We're going to try and put this together, so this makes good sense, but appreciate the input there and appreciate all of the details. Thanks much.
Thank you.
Council, our final item tonight is item 5.5, our city council policy and issue update. Kick it off, reviewing what we heard in our listening session earlier this evening. We met Grant Veatenheimer, and Grant is a, is a longtime Bloomington resident who was starting his own food truck business, and he's the scrambling egg, and he actually handed out stickers and menus and so on, which I appreciated a lot. He had some questions. First of all, he wanted to introduce himself and say hello, which I thought was very cool of him, I liked that a lot. We learned more about his business, and then he had some questions about specific distance requirements from residential areas that we put into our food truck ordinance for a variety of reasons, whether it was food or aroma or that kind of thing, and he just wanted to talk more about that, and actually, it was a good conversation, and I'm glad he came forward, and I'm glad we had a chance to meet him and talk to him a little bit. So, thanks, Grant, for being there this evening. We heard from Ms. Sally Ness regarding, she had a question about the lack, she had comments, actually, regarding the lack of the Development Review Committee action on Northwestern Health Sciences code changes, and it was explained to her at the last meeting that we had, that there was no Development Review Committee overview of this because it was not a development, in fact, it was a code change. That's why it occurred the way it did. We were simply following the way it always has followed, and had it been a development, there would have been a DRC action. The fact that it was a code change, there was not. And then we talked to Kim Velasquez and Laura Hunt. They were in the audience, and actually, I think spoke a couple of weeks ago when we had our public hearing regarding the proposed zoning changes, and they were asking about next steps and where we were headed with that, explained to them that we were, that we will take that up again on May 1st, and we will, as a council, be looking at the different options. The plan right now is that we've had two public hearings on the issue, and we likely won't be opening up another public hearing, this is a council discussion, and that it'll be a conversation among the council to try and figure out how we get to where we're going to get, one way or the other. And they appreciated the update, and I think we're understanding what we, what we're trying to do, and what, appreciated also the work that we've done on it so far, and trying to include as many people and make it as open and as transparent as possible. So, those were our three folks who came forward during the council listening session. Once again, a good, good evening, a good session, good feedback. As we move into our policy and issue update, council, I'll kick it off also. So, last week, councilmember Loman and councilmember Delisandro and Mr. Verbrugge and I were in Washington for the National League of Cities Congressional City Conference, and it's a yearly conference that, it's just basically a legislative update of what's going on at the national, at the federal level and how it affects cities, what we can do from an advocacy standpoint, and gives us an opportunity to get in the offices of our federal representatives. And it was nice to go with a group of four as we have had the opportunity, I think, in the past couple of years, because we strategically broke up and attended most of the sessions, we covered most of the sessions, came away with a lot of good information, and I'll let the different council members, if they want to jump in about specifics that they learned or things that they brought back, because it was worthwhile. We had a chance to get together with our League of Minnesota Cities counterparts on a lot of issues. We also had a chance to talk to, in different congressional offices on a variety of issues. We managed to get into councilmember, or excuse me, Congressman Phillips' office and met with his staff members, and we also met with, with Senator Klobuchar individually and had a good conversation with her. And then individually, on the topic of the expo, Mr. Verbrugge and I had the opportunity to meet with, I keep calling them councilmembers, with Congressman Emmer's staff and had a good conversation. As we've brought forward and talked about in the past, Congressman Emmer has been a big supporter of expo, and in fact, was the author of the legislation back in 2017 to get the United States back in the Bureau of International Expositions. He's a big supporter of expo, and I appreciate all the work that he has done and the support that he has put forward for expo. Also had a chance to meet with folks from the State Department, and so we went over to the Eisenhower Building and had a good conversation with folks at the State Department, as well as a meeting, a presentation to the Board of Directors of the Sister Cities International Board, and they were very enthusiastic about the possibility. They asked how Sister Cities could be more involved. We told them we already had the connection through Sister Cities, through one of their board members, and had tried, we started to develop that relationship and that, that network throughout the country based on our work, and they certainly were willing to help even more. And from the Small World File, one of the board members, I, I kind of kicked it off, introduced Mr. Verbrugge, sat back down, and was a, an older gentleman, a little bit older than me, and in the first two minutes, he kind of leaned over to me and said, I was a Bat Boy the first year the Twins were in Minnesota. Small World File, you always run into somebody who's got a connection one way or another. So, all in all, it was, it was a very, I think, effective and worthwhile and fruitful trip to DC regarding both city business in particular, specifically to the expo as well. We had, we had good conversations all over. I'm going to hand it off to Mr. Verbrugge to talk a little bit about our, then we went from Washington to Paris to participate in the Bureau of International Expositions Symposium regarding expo. I'm going to turn it over to Jamie on this one. Jamie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. We had a good representation of the Bloomington Council attending the event in Paris, in addition to the mayor, councilmembers Martin and Delisandro and Carter, along with our Community Development Director and me. The reason that we were there is this is the last, last opportunity to get in front of a good number of the delegates at the same time prior to the vote that's going to occur on June 21st. And so, we had a couple of activities in Paris. The first evening, there was a reception at the Ambassador's residence. The United States Ambassador to France hosted many of the diplomatic corps in Paris, over 250 people were attending there. That event was very successful, gave our group from Minnesota and Washington DC, which included about 40 people, maybe close to 50, the opportunity to have a lot of one-on-one conversation with delegates and diplomats and a number of other folks, and really talk about why the United States would be an excellent location for Expo 2027. And then the next day, at the symposium that was hosted by the Minnesota Expo Bid Committee, we spent more time expounding on the theme of the expo, Healthy People, Healthy Planet. We convened breakout sessions with the delegates who were attending, and that was actually a very well-received format in that it gave the delegates an opportunity to have input into what the US program would look like, which is different from our understanding of how other candidates had conducted their symposium, where it was a lot of one-way conversation. of how other candidates had conducted their symposium where it was a lot of one-way conversation, just information sharing. We were very intentional about engaging in conversation and getting feedback about how other countries would like to participate, what theme elements resonated with them and what they would like to see as part of the programming. And that seemed to be very well-received by the delegates as well. The mayor and I also had a follow-up meeting with another State Department representative before we left, all things considered for a very short trip, very intensive over a couple of days. I think it was a successful delegation and we're looking forward to June. We do have a number of other things we're continuing to work on. The State Department is very active in the closing 10 weeks here before the vote will occur. Our bid committee is coordinating very closely with them. We continue to work with our legislators to be ready to go in the event that the United States is selected. And we are, we're making progress. So I'm going to stop there, Mr. Mayor. And happy to answer any questions on either the DC or the Paris front.
And, and I'd be happy to answer any questions as well, but I'd also look for input specifically regarding either DC or Paris and then we can move on to other topics as well. Councilmember Delisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I appreciated the opportunity to be involved in both of those trips specifically as it relates to the DC trip. I spent time understanding the opportunities for grants and allocations out of the major, you know, initiatives that have come out of the administration at the federal level, specifically talking about access to broadband. We're in a unique situation here as a first-tier suburb in that, you know, a lot of focus on rural, a lot of focus on closing some gaps. But, you know, when I look at the broadband infrastructure that we have, it's, it's, you know, not, not where it should be for a first-tier suburb either. And so we have folks who are priced out of affordable broadband and also have very limited choices when it comes to, to the options that they have. And so happy to see some of, of that stuff and have some follow-up to do there. In addition to that, really interesting conversations about some of the creativity going on in what I would call small-scale or they call artisanal manufacturing. So when we think about our transition nodes, Lindell retrofit and other places like that, there's opportunities and there were great examples in places like Durham, Durham, North Carolina and I forget exactly where, outside of, outside of Boston and Massachusetts where they talked about how, how to leverage those, those areas as a means not only to spur small business growth, but also to kind of enable that transition from a residential area or a retail area into what would be a more industrial area. And it spoke very much to some of the layout areas we have there. And so I was able to connect Ms. Henderson with some of the, the information that I received there too. So, and of course, thirdly, there is on, on the notion of, of climate, there are, there, you know, there is just a continuing focus on ensuring that we have all of our cities moving towards, you know, sustainability, but also mitigation strategies and things like that. So very happy to add my voice to yours, Mr. Mayor, and, and to Councilmember Lohman's to talk to our legislators about things like our, our projects, like replacing the well down at 84th Street and that kind of thing to kind of focus on those efforts as well. So hoping we'll get all that done. As it relates to Paris, my favorite thing about Paris, the meetings in Paris was that I felt very strongly, I confidently could say to folks, "Thank you for your input. Now when you come to 2027 and you see what we've done, you'll be able to draw a direct line from the conversations we had to the work that we're working on together in the expo." And I think that that's really important, I, making sure people feel like their voices are heard and that we're not here to tell them as the United States what should be happening in a place like, you know, Zambia, for example. I was able to meet with that person and the, the delegate at the time and we spoke to people in the, from the Philippines and the, and Cameroon and Palau and all over the world to, to understand they have unique challenges, but they also have very similar issues as it relates to healthy people. And most importantly, that not a single person I talked to said, "Oh, you can have healthy people without a healthy environment." They know that climate change work and sustainability work is inextricably linked. Clean water, access to food, that, you know, inventions in food and things like that are also very, very important and, and critical as we think about healthy people. So I, I think we did a great job. I'm so grateful for my colleagues and I think, well, I'll just put it this way. I, I think, a lot of people don't think that the expo is a good idea on a lot of the number of fronts. I get that. Happy to talk to every single one of them because I have lots of reasons to be hopeful about the expo doing good things for people and good things for our planet. Thanks.
Councilmember Lohman?
You know, thank you, Mayor and Councilman Delisandro. You know, oftentimes when I think about, you know, our, our mission, that not only that some of our councilmembers served on, but also the community that came forward and we talk about trying to create that remarkable community where everyone wants to be, I, I think it's important that we take upon these opportunities to gain education. And, and because we as, as leaders don't necessarily have the answers to those things and I think the mayor kind of referred to this, and that's why we, we network and we go to DC and, and other cities to, to ask those questions of those who are subject matter experts in those areas, to try to challenge ourselves as councilmembers and to make ourselves better. Over the, over the many years that I've had the opportunity to participate in those opportunities, I, I really think that I've grown as a council member and, and had the opportunity to have a better understanding of how we can try to achieve our strategic priorities. Because I think there's, there's a real question about, about that and I just wanted to just kind of, just say that for myself, I think that's been a, an awesome opportunity. You know, I took many classes while I was there. You know, there were smart city ones and there's, there's other ones. But one of the ones that, you know, that the manager encouraged me to take was challenges that, that, that women face as leaders. And, and I think that, you know, as we kind of move into becoming the, a remarkable city that everyone wants to, to be in, we've got to, to look at some of these cleavages and these things that, that make it difficult for, for those folks who have voices and want to be able to share in making the city what we want it to be and, and for us to, to be trained in those things. And so I, I'm just glad that I had that opportunity to be there and take that class. And, and I think it's, it's going to make me, you know, it just doesn't take right away. It takes over time that you can kind of prove some of the things that, that you do. And then with respect to, I didn't have the opportunity to go to the expo, but I did have a lot of opportunity to network with a lot of folks. And let me tell you, every person that I talked to from across the country, he said, "Wow, if my city had the opportunity to have the expo, to showcase what we are as a city, for the entire planet, to be able to have that opportunity to come here," I, I mean, I don't know what other, what other, what other thing you can do. And if, if we're moving forward with, with our strategic priorities and just that space that needs to be redone, I can't think of a better opportunity. So sorry I went a little bit long here, but I just, I'm really excited about our future. And I think that includes, you know, whatever happens with the expo. And I think it also, you know, I encourage other councilmembers, if you've got the opportunity to do that, to, to participate in those trainings, I think it would, would help us in terms of our overall goals that we're trying to achieve here.
Thank you, councilmembers. Mr. Verbrugge, I think that was a good summary, I think, of what we had going on.
Appreciate that. Thank you, everybody. And Mr. Mayor, in addition to this report, I'd like the Assistant City Manager to provide a quick legislative update for council.
Mr. Sable?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. The, the legislature is officially on spring break, so they're off the rest of this week. And there are only five weeks left in the session, which is hard to believe because it's, it's coming up quickly. Excuse me. Much of the work that has been done in committees has already wrapped up. The city staff and, and councilmembers and acting mayor and mayor have all provided testimony for bonding requests, expo funding for Bloomington Central Station TIF extension, public health components, and then the Bloomington sales tax request. And so we've been a, a constant presence at the Capitol. I appreciate Katie Sen, our lobbyist, for, for her work. The number of text messages we get at all hours of the, of the day and night is wonderful. And so she's been a terrific partner. But we are now moving into the section of the omnibus bills and this is often the time where all of the small individual bills get lumped together into these broad behemoths, usually numbering in the hundreds of pages for each one. And so we're continuing to monitor each of them as they come through. I will say that the one items that we tend to watch for the most are, tends to be the tax bill and the bonding bill. And those are always the ones that they put out after the spring break session. So we won't know what's in those bills ultimately until maybe April 10th or 11th and then that's when the, the real work begins. We do know that we are included in the bonding bill for $1.8 million for the public health building for design dollars specifically. And then I will note that we've had several requests yet this week for more information related to the Bloomington Ice Garden. And so we do know that the bonding bill will likely grow and that kind of movement gives an indication that we might be included at some portion for the Bloomington Ice Garden. The legislature must end on by May 22nd at the latest and so we will continue to monitor. Our Bloomington delegation has been actively engaged in our work and so it's, it's a good partnership that we have. But with five weeks left to go, we'll be continuing to monitor all of our bills in the legislature and providing updates in the one weekly to you on Fridays.
Thank you, Mr. Sable. Council, any questions of Mr. Sable? Very good. Counsel, anything to bring forward as part of our City Council Policy and Issue Update this evening? Former Acting Mayor.
Emphasis on former, I believe. So, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Not any travel or anything, but just wanted to personally thank teams from Public Works. As many had, I had a branch on a large tree go down and covered most of my street and, and as people may know, Public Works takes care of getting and removing some branches out. They had a team out during the snowstorm because of the heavy snow. But, and they did, they did a fantastic job. They even played with my dog because my dog loves large trucks and vehicles and was outside barking at them. So she wanted to help, you know, so just, she's helpful that way. But what I really wanted to do is the, the plow driver that came by when it got to my neighborhood, she stopped short of the tree, got out, assessed the situation and actually took the time to drive around the block and came the other direction and pushed the tree up against the curb, which is totally appropriate to make sure the road's passable, but did it in front of my yard instead of the other direction where it would have been in front of my driveway. And just for her to have taken that little bit of time and thoughtfulness just showed, I think, the dedication of our team, our plow drivers and things like that. I know it's been a long winter. I know there's piles of snow blocking views and things like that, but the team just, I mean, when they can, they seem to always go that extra little bit. And it's those little touches that I think need to be recognized and just wanted to thank. And if Carl's still there somewhere, he doesn't need to jump on, but if he can just make sure that message gets to the individual that, that did that. It was very much appreciated by my family, especially since my wife had the SUV and was in Rochester and I was stuck with her Mini Cooper, which was less than ideal in this last snowstorm. So again, just great job, as always, and those little things just go so far and, and, you know, let's be honest, I highly doubt she knew I sit on the City Council or anything like that. I think she just assessed the situation and made a really good decision to do the right thing for residents. So, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. And that's, they do great work and have all winter. Counsel, anything else? If not, we have completed our agenda and, counsel, I would look for a motion to adjourn. We got a motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Muah to adjourn. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Thank you very much, counsel, for your discussion this evening. Thanks to the staff for bringing things forward and thanks to everybody who's tuned in. Appreciate it. Have a good rest of your week. Thanks.